Good evening and welcome to the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board. We have a pretty extensive agenda this evening. First item on the agenda will be a presentation of the capital improvements plan and program. I just, City Manager will provide a brief overview and then each department chair will present each section. I'm going to ask that everybody withhold their, the board members withhold their questions until after staff has finished with their presentation. We will then open up a public hearing. Each member of the public will be allowed two, three-minute periods to speak with questions. Then we'll have possible answers from staff, additional questions from the board based on public input, and closing of the public hearing. Just so folks at home understand, this will probably be explained, it's in our packet. The role of the planning board in this process is advisory. It's much like the zoning amendment process and the master plan process. And the capital improvements plan is actually a part of the master plan. You can't do a capital improvements plan unless you have a master plan in a city or a town. So, since the planning board is charged with thinking long-term, that's why we're here to work with staff and come up with a plan that we can recommend to the council for their consideration and adoption into the budget and future years' planning. And with that, I believe the manager, you're ready to present?
We are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to those who are in attendance this evening and watching on remotely. Staff and I are pleased to present the proposed six-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-nine. I will run really quickly through these slides. They will remain on the website and in your packet so that folks can easily reference them. Next. The CIP is first and foremost a planning tool that supports citywide capital investments, looking at a six-year time horizon. Next, CIP process truly is a year-round process. After tonight's conversation recommendation, we take this effort to the City Council. There will be a work session in January, on January eighteenth. There will be a public hearing February sixth, and then the request to adopt will be at the March sixth City Council meeting so that it can be included in the FY twenty-four budget. But this document and the conversation tonight does not include expenditure funds. It just talks about planning, the funding expenditure. Next. This capital improvement plan is broken up into the following sections, and we will take the conversation tonight through those sections in that order. Next. At the back of the capital improvement plan are helpful appendices that include a list of the citizen requests, a list of state projects that have no dollars but will be done within city boundaries for folks' reference, a list of all studies used in the evaluation of projects, a historic document restoration index, and a map of each of the city's five wards to show the projects within each ward. Next. As you can imagine, this is a complex process with numerous funding opportunities and funding sources, which include the general fund from the city, special revenue funds and enterprise funds established by the city, both state and federal funds, as well as public-private partnership funding opportunities. Next. So, the current process so far for FY twenty-four includes a total of one hundred and seven discrete projects, twenty of which are new, eighty-seven of which are carried over from last year and updated as may be the need for both cost and timeliness. And the breakdown by project in order that will go tonight is on the screen there. Next. New this year is a, was a conversation in a separate meeting to speak to the citizen requests received. And in looking to highlight the process, which has been in place since FY eighteen, this year yielded by far the biggest response in a hundred and four requests, eighty-three of which were unique. As you can imagine, there were some duplicate requests. Forty-eight were considered CIP-eligible or following the green track. Thirty-seven were determined to be better served by another process or board, or may have been funded previously, or may not be the purview of the city. Next. So, when you fund the CIP, you can fund it two ways: with cash or pay-as-you-go funding or capital outlay, and then the next slide will speak to bonding. But on this slide, this is a reminder that the city has used a longstanding policy to tie in capital expenditures from the general fund to no more than two percent of the city's prior year general fund budget. And in the past seven CIP cycles, this has fluctuated from a low of point seven eight percent in the current fiscal year, and that is due to some funding that was taken off the CIP capital outlay from ARPA to a high of one point nine seven or just below the two percent back in FY seventeen. So, with the current, or the prior year, which is twenty-three general fund budget of one hundred and thirty-two million, the capital outlay target for this coming year would be two point six four five million. However, we are proposing the outlier, the capital outlay request come in at one point seven seven million or one point three four percent. Next. You know what, Abby? Could you back up a slide? I just want to mention that when staff first started culling responses, we were seeing requests totaling over four million. And knowing that was completely untenable, we managed that process and brought in the requests down to a more manageable one point seven seven million. Thank you. This is the other way to fund the CIP, through bonding. And as you know, bonded projects require a separate public hearing and vote of the council. So even if they're included in the CIP and the budget, they still require that separate public hearing and vote in order to take possession of bond funds. The city's net debt service of the, as a percentage of the general fund budget target is ten percent. And we can say that for this current fiscal year, we are at seven point six nine percent. Projected for fiscal year twenty-four would be eight point eight two percent. Both numbers are well below the ten percent. Next. The sheets, or the element sheets, as we refer to them in the CIP, have lots of information that may or may not make sense to the layperson. But we've tried to, as it says here, have each project ID, if you will, tell a story. The first two letters explain the project type. In this case, it's building an infrastructure. The next set of numbers talk about the year the project was originally submitted. The third component is the department that submitted the project. In this case, it would be PD for Police Department. And then the project sequence in this year's capital improvement plan is the number that we chose for ordering. Next. Other helpful information on each element sheet include evaluation criteria, the funding requests and funding sources. Next, along with a project description, links to studies cited, other pertinent websites, other ways you can research this project, and notes on major changes to the funding or scope from previous years, if you've been following along for multiple years. Next. This is my final slide. This reminds folks of the schedule. We're here this evening for the, to run this by the planning board to seek public comment. But this will no, by no means be the only public comment opportunity. There will be more. The planning board needs to vote to recommend adoption of the CIP to the council. The council will then hold a work session in January, look to hold another public hearing in February, and adopt in March so that it can be included in the budget. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn things over to Fire Chief Bill McQuillan. He will start us off.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, members of the planning board. To start off with, project number one is the ambulance replacement program. And this is a regular replacement schedule for the city's fleet of ambulances. Next slide. Project number two is vehicle replacement for a fire engine. This is a, again, an effort to try and keep our vehicle stock in a replacement schedule before they outlive their useful life. Next slide. Project number three is to replace a tower ladder on the outlying years for a vehicle that's, will be in excess of twenty years old by the time it's replaced. Next slide. And then Fire Engine number six is also on the rolling stock program for its scheduled replacement. Next slide. Our personal protective clothing replacement schedule, this is an effort to make sure that the protective bunker gear that our men and women wear is kept up to date, and they have a second set that's within standard. They're required to replace every ten years, and we do our best to make sure that every five years we have a new set and that each firefighter is issued two sets. Next slide. Next slide.
Did you SCVA?
Oh, I'm sorry, SCVA. The protective clothing also includes the ensemble of the breathing apparatus. And this, this program is to replace our breathing apparatus, which is ending its useful life and is in need of replacement as the hydrotesting date on the cylinders has approached its useful end. Next slide. Cardiac monitors. This program replaces the cardiac defibrillators and monitors in our ambulances and fire trucks so that we can deliver the proper cardiac care. As you can imagine, these pieces of equipment take a little bit of a beating as they go up and down the road in vehicles and are portable and logged around at emergency scenes. Next slide.
Good evening. First item for the Police Department will be for body worn cameras. In two thousand and eighteen, we did a, had a resident committee formed to evaluate the pros and cons of body cams. At that time, the decision to purchase them was, we decided not to do it. Recently, with our new police commission and a new resident advocacy group, they had reviewed it again and based off of the Governor's Commission on Law Enforcement Accountability Task Force, it's encouraged to get cameras. So at this time, we are putting a placeholder. We don't have a money item there, but just a placeholder for an out year of what the projected cost will be as we revisit and review possibly gaining body worn cameras again.
Good evening. Peter Rice, Director of Public Works. This item is to provide monies for a brine-making machine. Brine is used as a pretreatment prior to snowstorms to help reduce the amount of salt we use. It's necessary for compliance with our municipal separate storm sewer system permit, or what they call an MS four permit.
This project is a new project this year to hire a consultant to look at the security system and video cameras on the, on all three city fire stations. The effort here would be to get a consultant to report back as to whether to use the existing system within the city or whether to go out and obtain a different system to be able to ensure security and cameras for the buildings. Next slide.
This slide is for, we're in the process of trying to get a new police facility. And this is a police marker for a land acquisition if necessary. At this time, we do not have a dollar amount, but it's a placeholder in case in our years we may need one. In the prior fiscal year, we have allocated fifty thousand dollars for a site location study, which we are still currently using. So at this time, we're not requesting any funding. The next one is actually for the facility itself. In FY twenty-four, we are not asking for any additional money. Our out year would be FY twenty-five would be the remainder thirty-eight million. In two thousand and fourteen, it was determined the facility doesn't meet the space and space needs of our police department. And ever since then, we have been trying to work forward to getting a new police station. In FY twenty-two, the council allocated one point four million for a preliminary design, which we are currently still working on. In FY twenty-three, we also had an additional two point eight million dollars to move forward with pre-construction documents that we're still currently working on. We feel that a question that was raised previously was the price per square foot. That when this was originally, we came to that price of forty-two million dollars, it was, the price was two hundred and ninety a square foot. The current rate now is five hundred to five hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. So that number may go up due to costs of materials at the current time. This is a place, a request for FY twenty-four for a four hundred thousand dollars for our current facility for maintenance that has been ongoing. We've had in the last couple fiscal years, due to remediation and mold problems that we've had in the PD, majority of that money has gone to that mold remediation. So in FY twenty-four, we are requesting additional four hundred thousand to actually repair the project and the projects we had originally planned to use the four hundred thousand for several years ago. So, again, that four hundred thousand is in our CIP request for the FY twenty-four.
Good evening. Christine Fries, Library Director. This request is to make some repairs and changes in our courtyard. Since it was built in two thousand and six, the trees have grown, interestingly, and raised part of the brickwork, making it unsafe to use since two thousand and twenty-one. We'd like to swap out the way that it looks so that we can better use the entire courtyard for more outdoor activities. We've noticed over the past three years more demand for outdoor programming. And pre-COVID, we used it for a number of outdoor activities for families, some guitar concerts and things. We'd like to make it more usable for that as we fix the issues around the trees. Thank you.
Good evening. Nathan Lonnie. I'm Business Administrator for your school department. In the element fifteen, we speak to school facilities, capital improvements. In the first year, twenty-four, we look for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would break down between three hundred thousand for paving and two hundred and fifty thousand for roofing. The next slide provides a better breakdown over the course of the years. FY twenty-four would begin a four-year effort to address paving and roofing needs across the district, estimated at one point three million for paving and one million dollars for roofing. The first year would focus its paving work on the complex at Dondaro Elementary School and the roofing work at the nineteen eighty-five section of New Franklin Elementary School. In fiscal years twenty-five and twenty-six, and then into twenty-seven, the work would be done in paving and roofing primarily at Portsmouth High School. There was a two thousand and nineteen traffic study completed that focused primarily on, the work that was done was primarily on the school entrance intersection at Lafayette and Andrew Jarvis. We anticipate review of that study to identify parking changes, traffic flows, and pedestrian walkway needs. Additionally, in the out year of twenty-seven, there are dollars for upgrades to the athletic complex, security, interior work, and mechanicals. Next. Element sixteen is a continuation of the elementary schools upgrade. We were carrying five million dollars to address needs at New Franklin School, interior replacement code compliance. That five million has been adjusted now to represent a three million dollar effort starting in fiscal twenty-six and a phased effort in the out year of twenty-nine for two million dollars additionally. Next. Element seventeen speaks to the fit-up of community campus space for our Robert J. Lister Academy. Currently, the school department is looking at a one point five million dollar project to replace windows and repair windows at Dondaro Elementary and at Little Harbor. That one point five million dollar authorization is in place. School department anticipates requesting of the City Council to repurpose those funds. They will seek the one point five million dollar window project through federal dollars and would instead repurpose the one point five to take care of fit-out work in the basement, if you will, the lower level of community campus formerly occupied by Families First for the Lister Academy. This placeholder in FY twenty-four speaks to, speaks to the two million dollar placeholder. We're currently engaging JSA architects. They're working with staff and that building to contemplate what the project would be, what the needs are, how great the scope is. And then we anticipate coming back as soon as possible with adjustments before the council acts. Thank you.
Judy Belanger, Finance Director. And the first element sheet is this state requires us to store certain records that are labeled as permanent in accordance with RSA thirty-three A. We currently have a room located in the basement of City Hall that was renovated in two thousand and seventeen, which is environmentally secure for these documents. This room houses records for many of the city departments. This room is just about at full capacity, and we are currently working on identifying another area elsewhere in the building to house more of our permanent records. There is no funding requested for fiscal year twenty-four, but requesting funding in the out, in the out years for this project. Next. This is restoration of historic documents. Several years ago, we found a couple of rooms in the basement of City Hall that were full of approximately twelve hundred historic books that were stored, not stored properly, causing them to break down and become contaminated with mold. These books can date back to the late sixteen hundreds, but mostly seventeen and eighteen hundreds. We began the restoration project about four years ago, where these books were professionally scanned, cleaned, repaired, and pages were encapsulated if necessary for the protection of these documents. Funding for this project is shared fifty-fifty with finance in the City Clerk's office. In October of this past year, the Finance Department was awarded its sixth consecutive Moose Plate Grant of just over ninety-six hundred dollars from this New Hampshire State Library, bringing the total grants awarded to forty-six thousand ninety-six dollars to contribute to these efforts. A full inventory of these books is located in Appendix Four of this document. The total cost for restoring the remaining books is approximately two point three million dollars to be funded over time. Next. The disposition of municipal records. This is a new request beginning in fiscal year twenty-four and would provide funds to scan permanent records that are actively utilized by staff on a day-to-day basis. So these are not stored in the basement. We would start with the property record cards and related information that are utilized by the assessing department. There is currently no backup of these records in the event that they are destroyed by an unfortunate event.
Good evening. Beverly Zent, Planning Director. This funding, this proposed funding for land acquisition would be used to supplement the city's conservation fund. These, the conservation fund, as you know, is generated through a change-of-use penalty, moving property out of conservation in current use, which requires a ten percent penalty fee. We are seeing fewer and fewer of those. The idea of this funding would be to supplement that funding for the next two years to create a good two million dollar fund. We currently have one million dollars. And then look for a project, not, we don't have one currently identified right now, but look for a project, and then resume dedicating funding into this fund in fiscal year twenty-nine. Next, please. This funding for historic district guidelines would allow for the, for us to update and expand the design guidelines for historic district. This project should be informed by the master plan and should correspond with the beginnings of that project. This historic district design guidelines are used by the HDC to issue certificates of approval and review projects. Next. This next item, trail development projects, is to create a connection across a wetland from the rail trail to the Great Bog. Allow trail visitors to visit that resource without damaging the wetland. Next item.
I'll take this one. This sheet is a placeholder. The amount of funding is to be determined in the next immediate term, in the next couple of months, and we will inform that page accordingly. Next.
This project is to monitor the impacts of sea level rise and coastal flooding. The objective is to understand the flow of groundwater over time. This project will build on the coastal resilience efforts of the state, but on a more local level, putting sensors in wells. Next item. This project would help, would fund the master plan update. These revisions to the plan are recommended every five to ten years. Our current plan is a Portsmouth twenty-twenty-five, and we are due for an update. This funding would allow for the development of a master plan and a robust public outreach component to that project. That project, we anticipate, would be eighteen to twenty-four months long and would require us to go ahead and get that funded. Next.
Good evening. Todd Henley, Recreation Director. This first project is a new project since the indoor pool has been reacquired from SIP or Save the Indoor Portsmouth Pool. This would create a capital maintenance plan with projects that would include locker room upgrades, family restroom, carpeting, et cetera. Major upgrades have been done recently at the indoor pool, so there is no FY twenty-four funding for this. Next. This is also another new project. This was a citizen request and city request to create, to replace the South Mill Pond Plague Playground and replace it with an ADA and age-friendly playground and also with that permanent restroom facilities. The FY '24 funding is a Rotary Club donation, but the rest of the project has been pushed to an out year. This next project is a recurring project, and this is to create upgrades to fields and other recreation facilities such as tennis courts, pickleball courts, et cetera. We have a current rec need study that will highlight opportunities in the future for what this money will go towards, and currently FY '24 funding was reduced to $75,000. Next, please. This next project is for the completion of the design and construction of the additional turf field off of Campus Drive. At this point, it's been, this has been pushed off to an out year as well. Next. This is for the build-out of the Stump Dump Lot Master Plan, or where the skate park is being built. Future phases include a pump track, athletic field, playground, splash pad, additional parking, walking paths, et cetera. FY '24 money is anticipated fundraising from the skate park group, and the rest of the remaining project has been pushed out to an out year. Next. Thank you. This project is for funding for playground improvements. In FY '24, Aldrich Park and the installation of a basketball area at Plains Field is identified. Next. This project is for improvements and upgrades to Leary Field Grandstands and Concession Area. It's showing FY '25 money for design and FY '26 funding for the construction.
This project is to request additional funds. We recently bid the aquatics portion of this, of the pool upgrades, and the bids came in high. These additional monies are projected to cover the additional costs for this work. The community campus was recently acquired by the city. The 20-year-old facility is in need of some maintenance. Specifically, this year, we're looking for $200,000 for roof repairs to a portion of the building. The city is, has a number of parks that have monuments. These monies are identified to maintain those facilities as well as do improvements at the parks. The city is a tree-friendly city, Tree City USA for over 20 years, and these monies go to that tree program. The Prescott Park Master Plan is a city council-approved master plan that we're in the first phase of implementation. These monies are to help address that first phase. Additional revisiting will occur in terms of the overall master plan prior to the next phase. In addition to the master plan identified activities, these funds are to address ongoing maintenance activities at the park, to include such things as roofs, dock repair, and things like that. The City Hall has undergone a number of challenges relative to its heating and air conditioning system. These monies are identified to continue the renovations to the existing system and in an out year, potentially replacing some of the major components. This project identifies monies for upgrading the transfer facility over at the DPW. It would include an enclosed facility to allow us to consolidate loads, to transport materials. I would also include a swap shop, which is something that's been requested by residents. The city maintains a number of historic cemeteries, and these monies are identified, and there's a list of projects on the next page, for projects. So monies will be accumulated over time, and each of these projects will be taken on as identified by the Cemetery Committee. The city has over 30 retaining walls, and these monies are identified to maintain and upgrade those retaining walls. The city's been working closely with the Department of Transportation to try to address noise concerns along the I-95 corridor. The state has indicated that the west side or north side of the highway qualifies for sound barriers, but they did not determine the south or east side of the highway to be eligible. These monies are to continue the effort to see what the city can do on their own. We're currently working on a program with some interested residents to see how to best address this concern, and we will continue to work with the DOT to see if we can convince them that this should be an eligible project. The city has a number of facilities that they maintain. These monies are identified for those maintenance activities, and the next page shows those types of activities. Ongoing effort to improve the reliability and aesthetics of the downtown are shown here as the potential to bury some of the overhead utilities. These monies are an out year, and they would accomplish that activity. City Council requested that the EV charging stations be prioritized and monies allocated. Some of the monies are anticipated to be federal state monies. To that end, CMAC, Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant, has been submitted, an application to secure some of those funds. However, there's additional matching monies, and we are currently moving forward with some charging stations at the renovate, recently renovated Bridge Street Lot. This project would be to fit out what we call the flex space in the new Foundry Garage. Currently, that space is in need of significant investment to make it, to be able to fit out the entire area and make it a functional office space. And I need to add, want to note that those are not tax dollars. Those are tax, those are parking revenue monies that would cover those costs. This final item in the building section is identified as a wharf replacement down along Mechanic Street. If you recall, there was a wharf there for a number of years, which collapsed and was removed in, we recently rebuilt the retaining wall in that area, the seawall in that area, and the permit included replacement of the pier. However, there was not adequate funds, and a public process really is appropriate prior to finalizing that. So these monies are identified to do that process.
Good evening. I'm Alan Brady, Technology Director for the city. On this first page, you will see the $1,056,558, and this is for the complete IT requests. The following pages are the breakdown of that amount of money. Next page, please. Request for computers and notebooks replacements. Following a four-year cycle replacement, a total of 127 computers and notebooks will be replaced between Public Works, Library, Recreation, Police, and Fire, with a total cost of $159,000. Next page, please. And the server replacements, two police servers and one library server are to be replaced with a total of $45,000. Next page, please. Other technology upgrades and replacements, you will see a breakdown for IT items for citywide Public Works, Library, and Recreation. Next page, please. Continuing on, Police, Fire, and School are requesting various upgrades. As noted on this slide, the place is continuing to appropriate for hardware upgrades to the dispatch center. Next page, please. And this is a total breakdown of cost per department. Next page, please. This project is for the expansion and the improvement of the city's network. It is to fund professional services to conduct a thorough network analysis and to develop a strategic plan for the future. Next page, please. Cybersecurity enhancements. This project is intended to review the cybersecurity and enroll specialized professional services to assist the city in correcting a plan for improvements. Next page, please. And document management system. This project is in the out years and is aimed to create an easy, accessible, online document management system with the goal of digitizing existing paper records in all city departments. Thank you.
The final project for the Fire Department this evening is, is an IT project that uses technology to open up the overhead station alerting devices at all three of the city's fire stations that generates from the Police Department's Public Safety Dispatch Center. This software upgrade is necessary as the current, current hardware and software that we're utilizing is due to expire and no longer be serviceable, and this would also allow us some redundancy from the backup dispatch center and from the Emergency Operations Center out at Fire Station Number Two. Next slide.
This next project is for our financial software upgrades and/or replacement. The current software that we have was implemented back in 2000. However, we've had several upgrades, obviously, in the last 22 years, but it's time to begin the process to do some researching and implement a new system that will increase efficiency, productivity, and better, and to better service the government, the City Council, and the citizens.
This item identifies parking revenues to maintain the metered and un-metered parking lots throughout the city. This item uses parking revenues to upgrade parking meters and plan display meters throughout the city.
This project supports a future 3.6-mile corridor for the future Seacoast Greenway. The project cost estimates assume DOT will be responsible for initial design permitting and engineering as well as construction cost to create a gravel trail base. This portion of the funding will fund the city's contribution. The city's portion of the cost will include additional costs required to build a paved surface, as well as some amenities such as trail access areas and interpretive signage. Next, thank you. This funding is for an annual set aside to allow the city to be nimble and implement the bike and pedestrian plan network objectives. We anticipate updating this plan in the next 12 months. We dedicate this funding yearly to look for opportunities that occur throughout the year and also set aside funding to utilize and take advantage of those opportunities. Again, we hope to update that plan within the next 12 months. Next, sorry. This project could complete a link in the city's bicycle network and improve pedestrian connections by constructing a side path on one side of Market Street between Kearsarchway and Woodbury Avenue. Next, please. This project calls for the construction of a 10-foot side pass on each side of Route One in the available DOT right-of-way. This project supports the US-run, US Route One side path project. It includes the addition of ADA-compliant sidewalks and pedestrian signals to cross Lafayette at Campus Drive, Ellen Road, Heritage Avenue, Ocean Road, Long Metal Road, Wilson Road, and White Cedar Boulevard. Next, please. This project will provide safe pedestrian connections and traffic calming through Elwin Park neighborhood. A feasibility study has been completed using prior capital year funding. Next, please. This project could, will construct a new multi-use path along Borthwick Avenue. The path would start at Route One bypass intersection with Borthwick Avenue and Hodgdon Way and travel approximately 2,400 miles along Borthwick Avenue. You may recall that this project will be connected to the, the multi-use path constructed as part of the hospital satellite parking lot improvement project that was before this board not too long ago. Next, please.
This item is a continuation of the wayfinding system using parking revenues. This next phase would be addressing pedestrian and bicycle wayfinding. This item was identified in the, in the bicycle pedestrian master plan. As the planning director mentioned, we'll be revisiting that master plan and confirming the appropriateness of this section. However, this monies in an out year are identified for that activity.
This project introduces new funding and capital funding in an out year to fund both a study for market square upgrades. The study would, we already have funding set aside for the study. We're asking for additional $50,000 because we recognize the importance of that public outreach component in our work and making sure that we get that vision right. So the $50,000 would be to supplement that funding, and the $1 million in subsequent years would be to fund the capital improvements identified as part of that study. Next, please.
These monies identify, are identified to complete a section of sidewalk from, from Odeon Point Road to the, to near the Sagamore Bridge. There's a development that's occurring along that way, which may reduce this required amount. However, in the, in the short term, I would recommend leaving this dollar value, and when we go to bond it, adjust it based on what we know the need would be at that time. This item is typically a biennial appropriation of monies for the 75, roughly 75 miles of sidewalks throughout the city. In an effort to stay within 10% of the expenditures, we've shifted the program a little bit to push it out to 28, fund '24 and then push it out to '28. So there's a list of outstanding or backlog of projects on the next page. The next item is identified for maintenance or upgrades to traffic signals throughout the city. We'd like to accumulate funds to be able to put towards upgrades. The next upgrade we're anticipating will be at the Miller Middle Intersection, the traffic signal there. Similar to the traffic signals, we identify monies for intersection improvements throughout the city. The Market-Russell intersection has been identified for upgrades. This project will look at a number of alternatives. Those will include traffic signals. In addition, we'll look at the appropriateness of a roundabout at this location. The state has identified railroad crossing upgrade, and these monies would augment what the state allocates in their 10-year plan. The city owns 15 bridges. These monies go towards the upgrades and maintenance of those bridges. The Kate Street Bridge is a red-listed bridge. We are anticipating replacing that, assuming the funding is available in '25. We'll be moving forward the upgrade of that, or replacement of that bridge. The Coakley-Borthwick Connector roadway is anticipated and identified if the Cottage Street intersection or signalization is eliminated and a right turn only from that location. Folks that live in the Coakley area would need an alternative means to get to the north lane, and this connector is identified for that. Traffic calming's been requested by a number of neighborhoods. These monies are identified to address some of those concerns. Similar to the sidewalk program, we identify paving monies. These monies would go towards addressing the pavement management for the city. Next page has a list of backlog projects. Similar to the citywide roadways, we're responsible for the roads at the P's International Development Trade Port. These monies specifically for FY '24 would go to upgrades on the Corporate Drive section of the area, which is in failure at the moment. And a list of other projects for P's are identified here. Duncan's Avenue is identified as needing upgrade. It's an out year project. This would include sidewalks along the South Mill Pond, in addition to improvements to the culverts and drainage in that area. Pinehurst Road improvements have been requested by the residents. These monies would go towards those improvements. Similar to the Madison Street roadway, the neighborhood has requested improvements, and these monies would go towards those improvements.
Good evening. Brian Getz, Deputy Director of Public Works. Usually, for enterprise funds, our city engineer is with me to do the sewer. That position's been vacant for a few months. We have a new city engineer, but it's his fourth day on the job, so he gets a pass this year. Peter will step in and speak to some of the sewer items. The first item, annual water line replacement. We bond $1 million of money to fund water line replacements. Every two years, the $1 million, and that goes towards rehabilitation of older pipes during construction of roadway improvements. Next slide. The well station improvements. We continuously are working at the, our well stations to improve, so this monies go towards efficiency improvements of pumps and building facilities. efficiency improvements of pumps and building facilities for the wells. Next slide. Reservoir management. This money is earmarked for improving the dam structure, design, construction of the outflow devices, and water quality improvements. Next slide. The groundwater source. This monies is for the finalization of Collins Well Two, which has been drilled and is currently under the permitting process with the DES. And once that is complete, we will finish design, and these monies will go towards the infrastructure, piping, and equipment to equip that well site. Next slide. The Lafayette Constitution Road tank is in need of some upgrades, and monies here will be for design bidding and then anticipated construction of improvements in FY '27. Next slide. The Madbury Water Treatment Facility is over 10 years old now. These monies here are for some of the larger equipment that will, we anticipate replacement of pumps and some filter media replacement and other water pumps. Next slide. This is a new project. Anticipated PFAS regulations established by EPA. We anticipate any day now that they will start promulgating some regulations, and we currently are anticipating a potential need to filter and treat the Greenland Wells. So these monies are for that. Next slide. This is a new project, the Dover Water Emergency Air Connection. We've been working with Dover for a number of years now and currently are in design. We have $223,000 between the two of us that has been earmarked as a grant from the Seacoast from the Groundwater Commission, and that monies is currently being used to design. The putting a pipe on the last bridge, which will be the bicycle pedestrian bridge across the across the water there, and will interconnect the Dover and Portsmouth Water Systems, which is actually a regional project which would link every system north of the Dover section with everybody south, all the way down to Seabrook. We currently have earmarked $3.45 million from congressional appropriations. So this money is the 25% contribution for us, for our side of the pipeline, and Dover concurrently would fund the other side. Sewer, again, just like water, we do sewer main replacements, and this $1 million, again, bonded and as part of the water and roadway projects, we would be doing sewer mains as well.
This item identifies addresses aged equipment, some new permit requirements, and additional capacity needs. We're anticipating a apportionment of, you know, a little bit more than 50% to the private entity, but this is really a project that's evolving, and we are anticipating that we're implemented, we're in design right now, and we anticipate having better numbers, but it is driven by regulatory requirements as well as aging equipment moving forward.
The wastewater reuse project. This is, again, a project to identify additional water sources, and this, a few years back, there was a study to look at using reuse of the wastewater discharge for non-potable uses such as cooling and irrigation, and this project is anticipated to move forward as part of the P's upgrades and would address getting some of that potable reuse water or non-potable reuse water from that facility.
The city has a what's called a combined sewer system, which means both stormwater and sanitary sewage are conveyed in the same pipe. Working with the EPA, we have a program called the Long Term Control Program. It's called long-term for a reason. They anticipate, you know, many years to implement it because it took hundreds of years to create our stormwater and sewer system, so they understand that it takes a while to unwind all that. These monies are identified to address the long-term control plan, and will continue on for a number of years to come into compliance with water quality requirements. This item identifies monies for our 20 to address some of our challenges on our 20 pumping stations throughout the city. The next monies that we're anticipating on this one will be going towards evaluating the piping system out of the Deer Street Pumping Station, which conveys our water from the wastewater from the northern portion of the city, and it will be addressed in an out-year. The Woodbury Avenue sewer separation, there's a small section of combined sewage sewer line near the Rockham Road or Avenue. This will be done in coordination with a traffic calming project that we're anticipating being doing next year on Woodbury Avenue. This item addresses the private connections as part of the Sagamore Avenue sewer extension program. The city council recently approved, well, recently, a few months ago approved approximately $1.2 million, which got added to previous monies to address 39 homes. There's roughly 90 homes total, so these monies would be used to continue that connection to the private properties over time. This item is shown as a placeholder. The Mechanic Street Pumping Station is currently being upgraded to extend the life of the existing pump station. However, we're anticipating within the next 10 years needing to do a major overhaul or replacement of the station, and the property adjacent to it, which is the Olkavah Building, is going to be used for that activity. So we will, that property is needs to be maintained in use. That would not preclude the use of a future pumping station location. This last wastewater item is to continue improvements at the Pierce Island Treatment Plant. The monies identified for FY '25 are to add a third dewatering press, which is what takes the solids that are removed from the wastewater treatment, the wastewater as it's treated, and then compresses all the water out of it so that when we dispose of it, we have as light as possible, and therefore it reduces the cost. It also reduces the size and volume of the material that needs to be disposed of. We have a number of what we call combined projects. The first one is the Fleet Street Utilities Upgrade and Streetscape Project. This project initially started out as a single phase. However, as part of design, it was determined that additional stormwater drainage capacity was necessary. So in FY '24, money additional monies have been requested to extend a drain line out to the North Mill Pond. We're currently in discussion with property owners over there in that area to secure easements, but this project is necessary prior to the Fleet Street itself getting rebuilt. So it's enabling work. The Edmund Avenue Area is a water, sewer, and roadway project. Recently, residents have requested, and the project was amended, to include a sidewalk along one side of that roadway. So you'll see additional monies this year identified in that. The Citywide Storm Drainage Improvements Program annually requests monies to for continuous upgrades to our stormwater system. These monies are identified here. Chapel Street is in has been designed, and it is ready to go to construction. However, there's not adequate funding for it. This will replace water and sewer from Daniel Street up to Bow Street. The roadway is in rough condition, and it needs to be, a complete rebuild needs to be done. However, the water and sewer are right that need to be addressed first. The DPW complex houses water and sewer, as well as the highway functions and other other functions. This project is being funded by the water and sewer divisions to provide additional garage capacity for equipment that needs to be housed indoors over the winter time and to better maintain that equipment. This item is a Creek Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. If some of you may recall that the McDonough Neighborhood had a series of projects done to upgrade water, sewer, and streetscape. This is a similar type of approach that would be going and doing a portion of the neighborhood at a time, and that's what these monies are identified for. The Islington Street Project has been ongoing since 1997. We are in the last stage of this project. The project was bid, and we did not have enough funds to complete the last phase of the project, so these monies are identified to complete the last phase. We have broken that last phase up into two parts. We'll be going to from Dover to Cornwall this coming year, and these monies would take it all the way to Congress Street at the end of that. Union Street is a sewer separation project that's being required by the EPA. This project is anticipated to go out to bid this spring with the anticipation, once funding is available, to start the project, and it would do a sewer separation as well as streetscape improvements and water improvements in that area.
That is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, there was a planning board subcommittee meeting with the manager and staff last week. We did spend several hours going over this, so it's not the first time we've seen many of these figures. Any questions by board members at this point? Yes, Jim?
I have a few. Can I just, I have a few. Can I just go continuously?
I'll let you know if you need to stop.
Okay. Thank you. My first question is for Chief McQuillan.
Right here. I'm gonna get him there.
Hi. I understand the Kate Street Bridge over Houston Brook is posted?
Correct.
For three tons? Now, does that affect your ability to cross that with your equipment?
It does. We avoid that bridge.
Okay, so none of your equipment can cross it?
Correct.
All right. Does that, do you feel that affects response time to some people in that area?
That, again, that that bridge is on, that neighborhood and that bridge are known to us, so we tend not to use that that area as a response route. It's residential, right? We prefer not to, but it could.
Okay. I just, I'm trying to gauge how critical it is for your response times to people in that area. Like, are they in danger because this bridge is posted, or do you feel it's a reasonable risk?
I think it's a reasonable risk. We can certainly use the other avenues around around that neighborhood to get in and out of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next would be for Chief Newport.
I noticed on your explanation for the new police department facility, there's two segments. There's the building and the land.
Yes.
There's $38 million scheduled for next year's CIP for the construction of the building, but the land is not listed having any money. So I was curious, is there some piece of land you have in mind, or how can we really plan on a new facility if we don't have any land lined up?
So as I had stated, we already have, we had $50,000 allocated from previous CIP, and we also have an additional $1.4 million, which is approved in FY '22, and FY '23 is $2.8 million. So we have enough startup funds to move forward. We're in the process now of selecting a design firm, and once we have a design firm, we'll work on finalizing the location.
Okay. But you don't have any locations in mind right now? There's no suspected locations or?
We have several different locations, but we're waiting for a design team to help us pick what's the best location, and then also we'll also go with the public input as far as what locations are available and recommended.
Okay. So these potential locations would be at no cost to the city?
Potentially. There are other locations that could be at across the city. That's why we have this place marker in here in case there's some property that the city would have to purchase for a new police station.
Okay. My next would be for Peter Rice. Peter, the sound barriers project. I heard you say that there's two sound barriers scheduled for the southbound lane of I-95 between Panaway Manor and then Woodbury to Maplewood? Correct?
Yeah, I believe I said the north or west side.
Well, it's a southbound lane.
Southbound lane, sure.
Okay.
And it's actually the entire corridor from Panaway up to, I believe, it goes past Maplewood all the way up to Market, I believe.
Okay. I noticed in the element sheet, the city has already allocated $250,000 for for sound barriers?
Correct.
And I was wondering if, could that possibly be used to build a barrier for the New Franklin School in conjunction with the DOT projects?
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, I guess I wasn't clear. That's what that's what we were planning on exploring, so we have reached out to the DOT, and we are asking to be allowed to do that. However, they've indicated so far that because of federal requirements, and because they determined it was not eligible, that we could not build on their property. So we need to explore whether it's appropriate to build on city land and what that would entail. So the first step in the process is to work with a sound engineer, which we have an engineer that we work with, and we're going to be doing a sound study to start that process. Staff met with UNH just recently to explore alternative approaches to sound barriers, and specifically addressing the New Franklin School area was was why we were doing this. So Peter, Representative Samsic, and former mayor Bob Lister, and Eric Eby met with UNH last week or the week before to explore that. So the intent was for to use those $200,000 to help leverage that and move it forward.
Okay. So next year, when this project is being built, DOT will not have any involvement with the New Franklin Sound Wall. Is that correct?
That is what they've indicated to date.
Okay.
We have a request in them to reconsider that, and we anticipate having discussions. We have not given up, I wouldn't say hope, but we're not going to let down pushing them to reconsider.
Okay. Thank you. And I have another one for you regarding the P's wastewater treatment facility. I see there's $65 million for this CIP, and about half of that's with a private partner. Who is that private partner?
That's Lonza Biologics.
Okay. Now, are they obligated to pay this in the municipal services agreement, or how'd this number come about?
This number came about through apportioning what was necessary for upgrades to aged equipment and regulatory compliance versus what we felt was attributed to their needs.
Okay. So is it fair to say that this upgrade is needed because Lonza's expanding?
No.
Okay.
A portion of this project is necessary, but there are aged equipment and regulatory requirements that will require an upgrade whether Lonza, whether we expand for Lonza or not.
All right.
That's why you see $30 million in expense associated with that project.
So if Lonza wasn't expanding, would it still cost $65 million?
I don't believe that would be the case.
All right. Well, I'm very pleased Lonza's kicking in so much money, but it'd be really helpful if they'd put in even more. As you know, we have some of the highest sewer rates in the state, and we could use all the help we can get.
Sure. Sure. I appreciate that, and as you can imagine, there has to be a rational nexus relative to how we charge that or to be open for challenging legally.
Right. Right. I understand. Peter, maybe, I think you can answer this one also. It has to do with the Dover Water Emergency Connect?
I'll have Brian address that.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian. Yes.
Sure.
There's been some, I think, misconceptions about this interconnect. That's not meant to be a redundant line for the the main water line coming from the Madbury Treatment Plant. Is that true?
Correct. It's a totally separate project.
Totally separate project.
The line running under Little Bay is a transmission main that's from our water system from Madbury to the Newington Booster. This pipeline would be a connection of the distribution systems between the two systems, the Portsmouth and Dover.
Okay. So it's not meant to be a backup or redundant where this new main line to fail?
No. It's It's an interconnection so that there's backup and ability, essentially mutual aid between Dover and Portsmouth for the entire region.
Okay.
It's the last pipe connection from Seabrook all the way up to Rochester.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that because I think there's, some people think it's the backup for the new line, which it's not. It's designed for a completely separate operation.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's it. Any, yes, Andrew?
I just have one question for City Planner Beverly in regard to the pedestrian bicycle implementation. You had said that it's not necessarily fixed. And so over the next 12 months, it'll be decided what that may look like. And it seems as though there's $50,000 over the next six fiscal years earmarked in the event that over the next 12 months, it comes to light that more has to be spent. How will that be approached?
I'm sorry. Are you talking about the Bike-Ped Plan update? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So I might let Peter answer that question.
So realistically, we're not going to start that program until funds are available. So it would start, it really would start after July 1 to go off for slits proposals. If a project showed up and we were unable to fund and it was appropriate to get that and it was something the council requested, we'd request additional supplemental appropriation to be able to cover that project. However, oftentimes, we leverage monies and we look at combining funds when we do projects. And we may be able to accommodate, you know, minor upgrades relative to bicycle amenities within an existing framework of funding.
And I believe the money for those proposals is already set aside. Is that right?
It is not at this point.
Any other questions?
Can I get one more?
I've got one.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this would be the manager. You had a few placeholders and I thought it'd be helpful if you could explain what that means. It's not a blank check, I assume?
Correct. And again, given that this is a planning tool, the idea is to leave pages for both police facility and McIntyre project for when we have an appropriate and reasoned firm cost estimate. We understand that for both projects, those are both in the works. And when we are able to bring them forward, we will do so.
And if that happened, there would be the need for new public meetings and that sort of a thing?
Right. Given that we have a public, we have a work session with public comment in January before the council, as well as the public hearing on February 6.
So what this does then is it facilitates the process of not holding up the budget for lack of having a place to put that number.
Exactly. That's a good way to put it. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, wait. Councilor Merle had a question. Sorry.
Sorry. I was letting other people ask first. They might ask some of my questions. I'm just going to start with a type of, for Abby on page 85, number 26, under the parking revenues, you have 2,500% instead of 25%?
I caught that. Thank you.
For Mr. Brady, I'm just curious. You have asked for $50,000 for security under IT. Is that actually going to be enough?
It's just, we're going to find out. So it's hard to actually put a dollar figure on it until we've done, you know, we've done the project. So we didn't want to guesstimate in this case scenario. So that's the reason why we just, you know, we just added the 50,000.
Right. Mr. Getz, is there a chance there'd be more grant funding for that line between Dover and Portsmouth, the emergency line that we're working on?
Yes. We'll continue to seek that out. That's our intent.
Excellent. How close are we? And I don't know if Peter or you want to answer this. How close are we getting done this sewer separation project in the city? I know we've been working on it for many, many years. I'm just curious, like, percentage-wise, are we halfway there? Are we three quarters of the way there?
We're more than three quarters of the way there. The challenge, though, is you need to think of it as an exponential curve that as you get to the lesser and lesser, it becomes harder and harder and it becomes more and more expensive. So a lot of the low-hanging fruit's been taken up. So it's a matter of meeting water quality at the end of the day. And, you know, we know that. And that's why they call it a long-term program. You know, the regulators understand that it takes time to implement these things. And, you know, that's where we're at.
One more question, if you don't mind, about the Pierce Island plant. You have some large amount of monies and you talked about a project for that. Are those projects because the original facility that was built isn't capable of doing what we need it to do? Or I guess what is the reasoning for these new projects in a place that was just built?
So the, as part of any project, we do value engineering. And the long-term need identified three, what they're called, they're called inclined screw presses. And so literally what they do is they squeeze the water out of this material. And the initial projections based on, you know, projections was that the feeling was that two presses were adequate. And therefore, as a value engineering exercise, we put blind flanges, we piped it, have everything ready, and left the third one out. Now that we have a number of years of experience, you know, running the operations, we've determined that having a third one would be beneficial because if one of the two go out, it becomes very challenging to process all the solids. So this is anticipation that, you know, because of the amount of, the volume of solids or the amount of solids we generate and we press, this addresses that and gives us more flexibility and a little bit of redundancy. So we don't worry about a piece of equipment failing.
Yeah. It just was brought up last night at city council that maybe that facility wasn't built big enough to handle. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear that it is big enough. This is just an additive.
Yeah. More than adequate. It's really a solids processing exercise. And it was a value engineering exercise, not putting that, there is space already there. It was anticipated that we'd be putting this in at some point and, you know, based on the performance. Part of it, too, is that, you know, we're being asked to perform at a higher level than required. And therefore, when you perform at a higher level, you generate more solids. So that's part of it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Peter?
Hi. I'm not sure who this would go to, but related to traffic and safety.
We'll hear your question.
So in the CIP was a slide related to, excuse me, requests for traffic and safety neighborhood calming traffic program?
That would be me.
And Aldrich and Middle Street and Bartlett Street neighborhoods?
Yeah.
There were two submissions in the CIP from, in the south end for Pleasant Street and Marcy Street due to traffic and safety-related issues. Since they didn't, I think they were pushed into being solved in a different method outside of the CIP. Is there a way to, for those neighbors to submit into this program?
Yeah. I believe the response was that it should start with the Parking, Traffic, Safety Committee. And then that it would get into the queue relative to the, in addition to those neighborhoods you identified, there's additional years of monies. And that was anticipated for the other neighborhoods as they came in through the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee to be able to implement those things. So the response to the resident request was that you should reach out to the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Rice, this is my last one. I promise.
I won't hold you to it.
I will.
It's Russell and Market intersection?
Yeah.
I noticed on previous years' CIPs, it was shown as a roundabout and costing about a half a million dollars.
Sure.
And this year, it's back to a Y intersection and it's jumped to 2.2 million.
Yeah.
And it doesn't appear DOT is involved anymore with helping us fund that?
Correct.
And the developer's share has gone from 21% down to 5. So I'm just curious. I guess you've answered everything except the developer's share.
Well, first of all, it's an intersection project. And the past use of a roundabout was one option that was shown. Based on feedback we got from the Subcommittee, we felt that identifying one option over another was inappropriate at this time because it needed to be gone through, you know, public vetting as well as the design process to thoroughly get our hands wrapped around that. The reason it was brought forward and the change in the price associated with it was in part due to, you know, the past estimates were based on other developments and weren't tied to current developments. So based on the current development going on, it was that number, that share was adjusted to be more reflecting of what was available for monies. The, I believe you all are looking at a project tonight that has identified some easement space to be able to facilitate a potential option, which would probably be, if it was gone forward, would need additional space to divert traffic during construction. So to not preclude the ability to do a roundabout if it was so chosen, that's why that easement was identified. The, you know, relative to why it's 5% now, it's just like the funds were not available and the idea was to move forward with this project relative to that, to Russell, I believe, is the project.
Okay.
So that's why it's been brought forward.
So a decision was made to forego the DOT contribution of like 1.2 million because of timing?
I'm not familiar with the DOT contribution to that project. I don't recall, there may have been an application in at one time to get DOT monies for it. But I, and, you know, correct me, you know, show me where those, it may have one year, it may have been identified that way, but I'm not aware of any potential DOT monies for that.
I believe it's in the 10-year plan, this year's 10-year plan for 2029. So maybe that's why it's an out year, but they were committed to 1 point something million.
Okay.
But I guess long and short of it is, the design hasn't been finalized. It could be a roundabout. It could be a Y intersection with a signal.
Or it could be a T intersection.
Any other board comments or questions? I'm going to open up the public hearing. As I said at the beginning, each speaker will have three minutes. So anybody who wishes to speak, ask questions, come up to the podium, identify yourself, your address, please, for the record?
My name is Dixon Turner. I live at 1020 Woodbury Avenue, which is right at the junction of Maplewood and Woodbury. And in August of 2021, I sort of audited the speed of traffic traveling along Woodbury. The speed limit's 25. The average speed was, or 50% of the cars were going 30 to 34, 23% were going 34 to 39, and five out of 104 cars were actually 40 to 45. So at that point, I wrote a letter to the city council and Parking and Traffic Safety Committee and spoke at the Traffic and Safety Committee regarding those issues. The only outcome of that was the one radar monitoring sign was moved from where it was obstructed by tree limbs to a position where it was more visible. So now if I walk down to the end of my driveway, I can actually look and see what the speed of cars are. Now that's traveling south toward the traffic circle. There is not a monitor the other direction. The average speed is 32 to 35 miles per hour. I still regularly see cars going 40 miles an hour. So that would urge some funds being included to help mitigate speeding in that area and improve safety. Two weeks ago, a car coming up Maplewood had apparently 65 miles an hour, went right across Woodbury, took out a section of our neighbor's fence, narrowly missed the building and totaled one of his cars in the driveway. And there was such force that a granite mailbox post was thrown through the air and smashed their front door. So that's boarded up at the present time. Now, they're actually building a stone wall front protection barrier because they're afraid that it might happen again. So again, we're just urging that some funds be included to help improve safety and mitigate the speeding in the Frank Jones Farm and Creek neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? There's $500,000 already appropriated for that activity. A design is currently underway with the anticipated construction next summer. The design is gone before, initially before the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee and will be going back before the Traffic and Safety Committee before it's finalized.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members. My name is Barbara McMillan. I'm 84 Hillside Drive. I'm also chairman of the Conservation Commission. And I am here to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission in favor of the land acquisition fund under Buildings and Infrastructure. At the September 14, 2022 Portsmouth Conservation Commission meeting, the commission voted to request $500,000 land acquisition item be funded for the purchase of conservation land and/or easements in the FY 2023-2028 CIP. For the last several years, the commission has worked closely with city staff to identify and prioritize undeveloped properties that follow recommendations from the 2020 Open Space Plan. The Open Space Plan is a comprehensive plan following the 2010 study called the Portsmouth Public Undeveloped Lands Assessment. And the plan, the Open Space Plan, included public process to research and prioritize additional undeveloped land for protection, provide land stewardship guidance for existing open space lands, and identify opportunities to expand connectivity between existing open space assets, neighborhoods, and trails. The plan also considers integration of climate resiliency objectives as they relate to open space. And having funds available to respond to conservation land opportunities as they become available is crucial to implementing the plan and implementing commission and city staff follow-up research and planning. As a sustainable community, there are the following additional benefits to securing these funds for conservation lands. Preserving most of space has been one of the primary concerns of the citizens of Portsmouth and is prominent in the master plan. Open space provides a balance for increasing density of development and urbanization occurring in Portsmouth. Purchasing land for conservation is the only sure method to permanently preserve land for our future generations. And we would be able to leverage those limited existing current use conservation land funds and grant funding. And conservation land can improve air and water quality, support reductions in greenhouse gases, and provide habitat that supports biodiversity. Maintaining this line item in the CIP is an action to keep our environment healthy and sustainable for residents of Portsmouth now and in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Monique Turner. I live at 1020 Woodbury Avenue. Our property is right in front of the crosswalk. And people don't, I mean, they speed and they don't pay any attention. There's a button you push and it flashes. And several people have almost been hit because nobody stops for those flashing lights. So I'm also concerned about speed on Woodbury Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Justin Richardson, 586 Woodbury Avenue, formerly on the Newington Planning Board before I moved to Portsmouth. So I appreciate the difficulty of the decisions and what you have in front of you. It's a big plan. I'm here also to request traffic calming measures on Woodbury Avenue. From talking to other residents, I understand there's been two fatalities. I'm down closer to Edmund Avenue, which if you know Woodbury Avenue, as I'm sure you do, at Farm Lane, it's at its highest. It then goes a straight shot all the way down to where the New Franklin School is, only obstructed where the 95 overpass goes over. And that creates a tremendous line of sight, which creates this feeling of invincibility. And I think if you were to compare the speeds reported by the gentleman before up near the intersection of Maplewood, you'd find as people get to that hill, they're rolling, they're already thinking they're on the highway. And next to my house at the intersection of Edmund is a bus stop. There is no crosswalk there. And I watch kids every day because I make coffee in the morning. And I watch kids every day because I make coffee in the morning, I sit on my front steps. And the kids play roulette to come from the Gemma Estates neighborhood to get across Woodbury Avenue. The cars, I think, are going 50 in many cases. It's pretty scary. Also, parents are walking, that's the walking path to come from these residential neighborhoods to get to the New Franklin School. You see moms, dads pushing a stroller with, you know, a third grader running ahead, a dog on a leash, and they're trying to cross streets where the traffic is going really, really fast. It's hard to pull out of even your driveway because when the cars are going faster, you just can't get these windows and you're having to take risks, and it is a risky situation. I called the city today to ask about that, and I spoke with a bunch of people, and we could not find a designated plan. I know Ms. Bronson submitted a request, and their response in the plan was to that, that there was, I'm trying to find my quote here, "Traffic calming along Woodbury Avenue is currently funded and in design." Funds were previously approved to make improvements to a gateway, which include traffic calming. But I've spoken with members of the Traffic and Safety Committee, I was there earlier. None of us are sure where the project is, and there's not a project that is listed in the CIP. And I think it's important to break a project out specifically to this, put it in a specific year, because if it comes in and it's just in a generalized overall city project, I fear that we'll lose out on a project where it's really a life and safety issue. And so, I see my time is up, but thank you for taking this into consideration. And if you could do that, I think it would be a great help to give us something that we can follow and help the project move forward.
Thank you. Did you?
So, just to reiterate, there are monies available. It's identified as New Franklin Ave. It's $500,000 that are going to go to treatments on either ends and additional traffic calming along Woodbury Carter. A design was initially presented to the Traffic, Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee, and the design is, it's in design right now. I spoke to staff today, they're working on it, and it's intended to be in construction this summer. So, you don't need an additional project identified in the CIP because it's already funded and it's moving forward.
I think it's an important distinction, that once a project is funded, it does not necessarily stay on the CIP. So, I think this is a good example of the status of a project that may be confusing if you're expecting to see it on the CIP and it's not.
And it's not labeled or listed as Woodbury Ave. So, but it's, because it's at that, it started with the intersection at New Franklin.
We can do this offline, but if you could send me the project number, that'd be great. I'd love to look at it.
Sure. You know how to contact me.
Good evening, my name is Lenore Weiss-Bronson. I live at 828 Woodbury Avenue at the corner of Farm Lane. And I have vividly remembered incidents in the last 35 years that I have seen from my kitchen window, that I have experienced regarding my, fortunately, my stone wall in front of my house because I would have had cars in my living room probably three or four times had that wall not been hit. So, I would just like to give you a few pictures of what we deal with in the neighborhood and just piggyback on my neighbors here. And I'm saying this in the context of being concerned that a project is going to be implemented again that does not include specific input from neighbors who live with us, hazards on Woodbury Avenue and the connecting streets every day. And the proposal that we put in this year and last year that was not responded to at all, we didn't know it went to Traffic and Safety, is really a composite of the last 30 years of people's input. It's not just something we came up at the last minute for purposes of getting funds. If, with all due respect, if you make corrections at one end of Woodbury Avenue, it's a mile-long residential street, no stops anywhere required, and you make them at the other end where the blinking light is that people rarely, I've never seen, I think I have seen one person use it, you're going to have all of this space in between that isn't being dealt with. In the corner of Farm Lane and Woodbury, the stop sign last Christmas Eve was smashed and ended up in my yard for three, four days. That was in my yard. Previous to that, it was taken out again by someone who sped from Woodbury Avenue into Farm Lane. As I was walking out of my house with my dog, the man almost hit me, but fortunately, he hit the stop sign instead. It was traumatic. I have also seen a woman lying face down in the crosswalk when she was on her way to St. Catherine's Church, when it was active at the time, and was hit by someone in the crosswalk coming up from 95. We have to really look at this problem as something that has specific needs in specific parts of Woodbury Avenue. You can have a mile-long residential street with 23 accesses and egresses, not counting driveways, and not have some sort of provision for people stopping. 57,000 cars a week 15 years ago went down Woodbury Avenue. We haven't been permitted to get a traffic count on what it is currently, but believe me, it's a lot more than 57,000. This neighborhood deserves respect. We have to have safety in this neighborhood. I watch kids every day, as I did today, on the corner, waiting for the bus at Farm and Woodbury, who are in danger because they could be hit just like that stop sign right at that location was taken out. There's no sign up that it's a stop, that it's a, it's a school stop, a bus stop.
I'm going to speak for the board.
Thank you.
We appreciate your concerns, and speeding is a real issue in any neighborhood. This is not the place for us to try to design a specific proposal. If the board wishes to increase the budget for traffic calming or make that recommendation, we can't actually allocate anything. All we can do is make a recommendation. That's a possibility, but that's a design problem. I hear the problem. It's a dead straight, level road. You're going to have speeding issues without intervention. So, anybody else wish to speak about the capital improvement program itself this evening?
Good evening, Peter Huda, 280 South Street. I guess I'm going to start out by looking at some pages because I've been following, trying to follow with the pages. My first comment to the planning board would be, my first question was on the amount of $2 million for the community campus. And my question was, did we have an estimate, are we going to get plans? And I think that was answered by Nathan, and I would hope that before this moves forward, you would get an amount on that. Number two, the outdoor pool. The outdoor pool currently has right around $5 million sitting already authorized, and we're asking for another 1.5. I would ask you to inquire as to, is this for repairs? Or where are we as far as moving forward on this project? We keep accumulating dollars, but since we don't know where the project is visually, it doesn't look like anything is being done over there, and we have money sitting there. Number three, Prescott Park, same thing. We have about $4 million sitting, waiting to be used. We're being asked as taxpayers and through you to authorize another 1.7. I would ask you to find out where this, where this project is and how much more money we're going to need at this time. Next one, it's back again. I'm talking about the Foundry Garage making offices out of a parking area. As residents, we waited, I don't know how many years. As boards and members of committees, we discuss parking to no end, with hours of parking discussions. I would ask you to remove this item. This is a parking facility, and as far as this resident is concerned, I would rather see parking spaces made out of this. The discussion on this to combine the parking area employees doesn't even come close to measuring up of a benefit of the parking that would be in this area. Please, look at this closely. My next question would be, I think Peter discussed the upgrades on the Russell Market. That was a big question I had. On the Pease Roads, we've got 2.7 million sitting there. Where are we on paving the roads? I would ask you to inquire as to where these projects are and the amount of money that's being requested. I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address any of those?
Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Some of them you have already, and I know some of them we addressed last week.
The pool issue I addressed, the bids came in high. We needed additional money to address that. Prescott Park, the opinion of cost is higher than we have monies available, so the monies are to address that higher cost. The Foundry Garage cannot be converted into parking in that space. It was not designed for parking, it was designed for offices. It was intended as flex space for offices, that's what we're trying to fit out. Russell Market has been addressed. The Pease Roadways, all the monies that are identified will be going to that corporate drive. The corporate drive costs roughly $4.5 million, and that's why the monies are identified for that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I was going to say good morning, we've been here that long. My name is Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. Yesterday, I went to a Conservation Commission meeting regarding improving Prescott Park for water retention, is that a good way to put it? But one of the things that came up in reading the 492 pages was that Pierce Island is also in distress when it comes to climate change and water. So, my question is for Peter Rice, most likely, in terms of, before we spend more money on the Pierce Island Surge Treatment Plant, which we just put in, is it protected from, when it was rebuilt, and I just don't remember, was it rebuilt at the flood, the anticipated flood levels? That's really my question. Because why should we spend more money on it if it is? Thank you. I knew you would know. Thank you.
Anybody else? It's the last call for first round. Anybody else wish to speak one more time?
Is there anyone on Zoom, Peter?
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I did ask earlier, there was hardly anybody watching. It's not a big night to watch us. Nobody else wish to speak?
Peter Huda, in continuation. My first question is about, and I think the counselor addressed this, would be for the Greenland Well PFAS treatment. Is that going to be up to the residents of Portsmouth to look at this? Or is this supposed to be taken care of by the feds? And are we doing anything to question that? The next thing would be the amount of money that's being asked for, again, for Union Street and Willard Ave. I noticed Willard Ave, we have about $6 million sitting there for Willard Ave, but it is not on here. So, I would request that you ask where we are in the process on that, and also Union Street. We're asking for, we're getting a request for more money on Union Street and on Islington. And we were just told tonight by Peter that we only have one more phase, but we seem to have a lot of money sitting there. So, if we could get an update on exactly where we are, because when you look at it visually, it doesn't seem like anything's happening now. And that's just visually, I'm not saying anything, nothing is. But as far as Islington Street, we've got, we've got $11 million sitting there unused, according to my calculations, that I don't know probably what's happening, and they're asking for another 5.4. So, it would be great for the citizens and probably for the planning board to know what you are funding moving forward before we move forward on a lot of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from. The monies that were committed for Islington are covering the first portion of this next project, which is starting this spring. All those monies will be expended to execute that first portion of the contract. The additional monies are to do the balance of the work. This project was bid, so these numbers are real, you know, these are real numbers that we're working off of. The Union, Willard, Union, the opinion of cost on Union has gone up significantly since we started the initial design. Construction costs, you know, have gone up significantly since we started Islington Project. It went up 70%, and then we revised it, and it's gone up 30% since the second revision. So, the Union costs are just reflecting the increase in construction costs. Willard is, I'm not sure with the $6 million for Willard, what she's referring to in that, but, you know, I'm sure I'll find out at some point.
Yes. And regarding the Greenland Well, that is part of the Portsmouth Water System, though it's called the Greenland Well, it's just one of many water sources we have. It would not be funded by City of Portsmouth residents. That's strictly water funds, fees, the fees from water users. And if the regulations for PFAS are such that that well is exceeding the limits, we will look to design and construct something to meet those regulatory requirements, as we do with all our water sources. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing unless anybody else wishes to speak. Public hearing is closed. Any other questions by the board before staff is released?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this an opportunity for the board, if they have other projects they'd like to see added to CIP, is this the time to bring it up?
I think it's a little late, but for a new project, I think you can modify things that are in the list.
Well, I'll tell you what I have in mind. A water master plan, it's 10 years old, it's older than the current CIP, I mean, the master plan itself, so I didn't know if anyone on the board is interested in putting in a placeholder for a water system master plan.
Would you like to speak to that? We have, we have monies currently right now, and some grant monies from the state going towards a look, a comprehensive look at the hydraulics of the south end of the system near this Lafayette tank, so that update would be there. And the plan is revisited continuously. In fact, all the improvements we've done in 10 years have really been driven by that. So, it's more of an ongoing process than a, you know, a one-time thing. So, it's not a static plan? No, sir, yeah.
Well, yeah, well, just like any plan is really, but the last plan was, excuse me, in 2013?
Correct.
And, you know, Portsmouth changed a lot, there's a lot of new demands coming, and I just thought it'd be a good idea to update our water master plan. I mean, we wouldn't have to fund it, it would just be like a placeholder, element sheet.
Has Public Works discussed this at all?
As Brian indicated, you know, we review the water master plan on a regular basis. It's really been what has driven us, but it's, you know, if, it's not a bad thing to.
We have spent $44 million in the last 10 years on the water system. Treatment, well upgrades, waterline improvement. So, the phase of the system that needs some addressing is down by the Constitution Tank, and that, that study will be an update of that portion of the master plan.
I mean, it's not a, excuse me, it really, if you would like to add that, it's, you know, sure. You know, we're not against, we love, you know, we do, that's what we do. We master plan, we implement, we revisit, you know, build and measure. That's how we operate, and, you know, having an updated master plan is not a bad thing.
All right, great.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Peter?
I'm sorry, do we need a motion to vote on that, or how will that work?
I think we'll get to that, yeah. I just want to make sure we have staff questions. Okay.
With the number of requests that came in on Woodbury Avenue and the traffic safety issues there, and your response to it being funded and beginning construction in the spring or summer?
Summer, yeah.
Summer, I guess. Is there an area on the city, any communication online where residents of that area can see what's planned? And, I mean, I know the DPW has sites of existing projects when they're underway, and residents can go there and see what's underway, but is there...
I'll, I'll take a look, and if not, I'll make sure something's there.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I just have one other potential idea for a placeholder sheet.
Okay.
It would be the Portsmouth Traffic Circle. I don't know if people are aware, but the Rockingham Planning Commission last fall ranked upgrading the traffic circle to a two-lane roundabout as their number-one priority for the DOT master plan, 10-year plan. So I think it would be important for Portsmouth to show that we support their decision and at least include it in our master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I'm going to check with Director Rice, but that is the state jurisdiction as such, we would not include it in the CIP.
Yeah, it is, actually, we show it in the back of the, I believe it's shown in the state projects, in the back of the thing. And actually, you know, when I went to look at it, I was mistaken, in there it showed the monies in 26, 29 for that Russell intersection, so I appreciate you pointing that out.
Well, actually...
It's in the, it's in your, it's in your appendices.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Actually, at one point, our CIP did include a upgrade to the traffic circle, so it's not unusual, at one point, we did have an element sheet for the traffic circle.
I'm curious how a state that won't let us build sound walls in there right away would let us touch their rotary, but...
They wouldn't, if you recall, the way that, in years past, the CIP had items that were state projects, just for informational, I don't believe there showed any participation from the city on that particular element sheet. Is that...
That's correct, Peter.
Right. So it was more informational, and that's why in the back of the, you know, we show it now as an appendices, it's, you know, the plan, the capital plan evolves over time, and it, one of the things that was added at one point was state projects, and because it was really confusing for folks, they would see it and they would feel it was something that was getting done by the city, we decided that it was not appropriate to have it in there. So that's why it's been relegated to an appendices versus a separate element sheet.
The point of showing support, I would be happy to see a letter from the city, from the planning board, to the Rockingham Planning Commission and the state, that we do support that, that's, you know...
Mr. Chairman, I know that the reps from Portsmouth did vote to approve this as part of the Rockingham Planning Commission action taken.
It just so happens I'm the vice chair of the Rockingham Planning Commission.
I'm on the other side.
Okay, I think we need to, it's our role to make a recommendation, to pass this along to council, we can propose modifications. I heard traffic calming come up a lot, there is money in the budget, the proposed budget for that, proposed capital plan, and the water system master plan placeholder that Jim mentioned. If anybody wishes to advance any of those ideas, now's the time, and then I think we're ready for a motion to advance the entire...
Can I ask one more question?
Of course, you just did.
Peter Rice, would it be helpful based off of the amount of traffic calming requests that come through Parking Traffic and Safety to increase the amount that's in the CIP, or not?
It's always helpful to have extra money. The reality that we face is one of balancing needs and trying to come forward with a responsible glide path for projects to get implemented. So, you know, obviously, it's a council decision, if you feel, if the council feels they would like to allocate more money, we will, we will spend it, we understand, we know how to do that. But it's really one of, you know, we believe this is a responsible approach, and that's why we brought it forward this way.
Thank you.
I will add just briefly that I know from personal experience with working with other cities, once you start a significant program, it's hard to stop, because you're pushing the issue to different neighborhoods sometimes, so it's a complicated matter.
I'm in favor of both amendments that have been suggested, the water plan.
Is that a motion?
I second.
Is that a motion to amend the CIP? That was what your original question was, how do we do this?
You could add, you could add a placeholder sheet for a water master plan, propose to add a placeholder sheet for water master plan.
Chairman, should there be a motion to, to move it forward with stipulations? Should there be stipulations to a motion instead?
That would be one way to do it, certainly.
Well, I'd like to make the motion to, to advance the CIP to City Council. And anyone can second that and add stipulations to it, and I could entertain them. Right?
Yeah, I'll make a second.
Okay, now I understand your question better.
Yeah, I see.
Would you like to make a motion?
So moved. So stated, I'd like to...
Second to advance the CIP.
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
I'd like to make an amendment to add the water master plan, to update the 2013 water master plan.
Placeholder for the, to update the water master plan, is there a second to that proposal?
Well, no, you just asked the first and the second if they agree to that.
But I want, I want...
Agreed.
Okay. Anything else?
Second, good idea, I forget.
I wanted, I just, for clarity, I wanted amendment on the proposed amendment to the motion.
Yeah, but I forget what the idea was, it was traffic calming.
The second issue, increasing the line item for traffic calming, I think it was 150?
Exactly. I'd make a motion that we increase the amount.
Is that a recommendation to increase? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay. The whole thing's a recommendation.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
To a number of...
Correct. Is it a 150 that's in there now?
150's in there now.
I mean, it's, it was the biggest thing everybody talked about, so I'd be in favor of doubling it to 300.
Can we get a, first of all, is there a second to that proposal?
I'll second that.
Okay, before you agree to it, Mr. Manager, what might that effect have on the overall picture, if any?
It brings the total from 1.77 up 150,000. I could run the calculation quickly on, you're still below the 2%.
Below, and below 9%? You think, overall?
Yeah, we're only at 8. It's not a bond requirement, since this capital outlay is 2%, not the 10%.
And how do you feel about that proposed amendment?
Yes.
We have a proposal, two amendments, is everybody ready for a vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with those amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
We're going to take, we're going to take a 10-minute break while folks are rearranging themselves.[1134.33]
Welcome back to the force of planning board. A couple of things before we jump into our regular meeting. Well, we don't need them yet. They're coming.
I was just gonna get them to close the door.
We need to consider whether we need to split the agenda. I just have to mention it because we're supposed to do it at the beginning of our meeting. I'm not suggesting we do. I'm just noting that we have that opportunity now. Or we stop at 10 o'clock and reconsider. I'm gonna just say we're gonna go till 10 unless somebody says something else. Okay, good. I would like to move up items 4A, 4H, 6A, and 6B to the first part of the agenda. There's two ADUs and two simple extensions that are later in the night.
A motion that we do as suggested by the chair?
Second.
So 6A and B?
4A, 4H, 6A, 6B. I can read them if you'd like to hear what they are.
Just trying to forget where's section four.
29 Versailles Avenue, conditional use permit for ADU. 653 Greenland for a conditional use permit for detached accessory dwelling unit. 137 Northwest Street for one-year extension. And 2454 Lafayette for another one-year extension. That's it. They're pretty straightforward. And we reviewed these earlier this week in a pre-meeting, so. We have a motion?
Yes, we do.
And we had a second somewhere? Folks, everybody ready for a vote on that? Everybody in favor? Okay, let's do the minutes and then let's bring those up. So anybody notice anything in the minutes for the November 17th?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the November 17th meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, first, next item will be item what is in our agenda is item 4A. Proposal by Jason A. and Kristen E. Britt as owners for property at 29 Versailles Avenue. Out for sales. Requesting conditional use permit approval is permitted under Section 10-815 of the zoning ordinance to create a garden cottage. Who is here to present that proposal?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kristen. This is Jason Britt from 29 Versailles Avenue. We are proposing and have applied for a garden cottage in our existing garage. And we submitted that proposal.
Would you like to explain it?
I don't know what you need, I guess, other than our proposals, so.
Well, does anybody, any of the board have any questions or go ahead?
Could you just give us an idea about the layout of the place? What you plan on doing with it? How it plans on functioning? Where people plan on parking and how it's all gonna work?
Okay, so.
Want to stay talking to the microphones so people at home can hear you?
So parking-wise, we just have a single driveway that is about 75 feet long. So we plan on just parking in the one driveway. And then it's just gonna be a studio unit. It's a small garage, about 199 square feet. So it'll just be a studio unit in there, very small. Staying very similar to the way it is on the outside and then, of course, the changes on the inside.
Question?
Yes?
Your drawings, plot plan looks nice. As-built drawing is fine, or picture, I should say. What's the front of the garage gonna look like when it becomes a studio? I didn't see a drawing for that. You have a layout, you know, with the bathroom and living room. But there's nothing really showing what the front's gonna look like. Right now, it's a double-door garage.
We expect to keep it that way. So we want to keep the, to look like it's still a garage with that barn door look on the front.
Oh, the entrance is on the side. Thank you.
And, sorry, is the intent to have stacked parking with a future potential tenant?
As I was gonna say, stacked means all just in a line?
Correct.
Then yes.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I have a question. When you say, we start, we're saying stack. But it looks like the width of the driveway might allow for you to stack on one side and cars can pass around the other side? Or am I? Or?
There's plenty of room for it. But the width, the pavement itself is just one car wide, pretty much. But, you know, there's lots of room there.
No other questions? I'm gonna open a public hearing that I suspect will be short. Public hearing is open. Anybody here wish to be too far against this application? Anybody on Zoom?
There's one person that they haven't raised their hand, so.
If you wish to raise your hand, do so now or I'm gonna close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find that the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in Section 10.815.40 and adopt the findings of fact as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this most certainly meets the intent of the Garden Cottage as the current ordinance is written. And it's also good to see that there's no changes in the wetland buffer and that there's no immediate abutters to the rear.
Agree. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? You're approved. Thank you. I lost my own place.
I think we only did the one vote. We needed to do the second vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did the findings. They're almost approved. The findings of fact to support your approval have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant the conditional use permit with the following one stipulation in the planning board memorandum.
Second.
No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now you're really approved. Thank you. We're now going to item 4H. Jaws, LJ Jaws, Brindamore Revocable Trust and SC Brindamore Revocable Trust as owners and Luke J. Brindamore as applicant for property at 653 Greenland Road, requesting conditional use permit for a detached accessory dwelling in it in an existing garage. Is there anyone here to present this proposal? If not, we'll move on to the next one. Just a sec. Okay. We have a request for a one-year extension by Gregory A. and Amanda, Gregory and Amanda Morneau as owners for property 137 Northwest Street. It's item 6A in your agenda towards the end.
I make a motion to grant the extension.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension granted. Item 6B, 2422 Lafayette Road Associates LLC as owner and Torrington Properties Inc. Applicant for property at 2454 Lafayette Road, also requesting a one-year extension.
Make a motion to grant the extension.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Extension granted. Mr. Chair?
I have a question on the no-show. How's that go down in the record when we asked for an applicant to come and they just didn't come?
That's what the record shows.
So is it a non-decision, I guess?
There's no decision. There was no action.
So I believe the applicant was, he was either gonna, he has to go to the zoning board and he was either gonna appear on Zoom tonight, Beverly, or next week? Okay, and I haven't seen him on the panelists.
Is there something we can do to keep his spot? Can we simply move it to? Can we continue it? Yeah, yeah.
But since we brought him so far forward ahead, maybe he's not planning till later. So I think you need to sort of keep him in the spot that he's in now.
I haven't opened or closed the public hearing, so.
Well, there wouldn't be, well, there would be, but, so we haven't done that.
So we can just keep him in order?
We can come back to it if we need to, if he shows up. He shows up. Now I'm completely off track. Thank you. We have determinations of completeness. We have a request for Port Harbor Land LLC as owner and applicant for property located at 2 Russell Street, requesting a lot line revision approval to adjust the boundary lines on three lots. Before we talk about that, did you wish to say anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring up to the board's attention the fact that I have known the principles of Port Harbor Land LLC for over 25 years. During this time, my current and immediately past employers have had business relationships with these principles. I personally have never had, done business with either principle and I am not currently in a business relationship with either. If the board feels they should vote on that, I'm willing to do that. I just felt it important to disclose. I do not think I need to recuse myself.
Thank you. The board can do an advisory vote if it is so inclined or suggests his recusal. I don't feel it's necessary, but that is a possibility. Going, going. Okay, we're good. So that's the request of the pine, as I read it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Need a motion for completeness?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? We have also a request for Jonathan Watson Sobel Revocable Trust as owner for property at 49 Chief Street, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval for subdivide one lot into two lots. That's LU 22-179. This is also motion for completeness, completed application. Hold me.
So moved.
Competition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We have three site plan completeness. Also, the same thing for Port Harbor Land LLC. Owner and applicant for property to Russell Street, requesting site plan approval for construction of 80 residential units, commercial space and parking in three buildings, LU 22-111.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Request of Tom Ballin and 8 KPH LLC as owner and applicant for property at 161 Deer Street, requesting site plan approval for the construction of a four-story building to include a penthouse, commercial space, 19 dwelling units, and associated site improvements. LU 22-173. Also completeness.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One more in the competition here. Request of Seaport Realty LLC as owner for property at 85 Daniel Street, requesting site plan approval to add a two-story rear addition and convert the existing structure into a four-unit building consisting of four apartments. LU 22-75. Also, we need motion for completeness.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We now have a public hearing, new business request to Port Harbor Land LLC as owner and applicant for property at 2 Russell Street, requesting a lot line revision approval to adjust the boundary lines, excuse me, on three lots to create one lot with 18,237 square feet or 418,000 acres of lot area. One lot with 52,651 square feet or 1,209,000 acres of lot area. And one lot with 19,141 square feet or 429,000 acres of lot area. These properties are assessors map 118 Lot 28, map 124 Lot 12, map 125 Lot 21, and lie within the character District 5, North End Incentive Overlay District, Historic District, and the Downtown Overlay District. Who is here to speak to this application?
Good evening. My name is Neil Hanson with Ty &amp; Bond, civil engineer on the project. Also here tonight with the project team is Patrick Hermans from Ty &amp; Bond and Ryan Palmer from 200 National Group. So we are here tonight for a project that we've been working on for well over a year now. So we're excited to be at this stage of the project. As I was just writing to the record, we will be, we are requesting our site plan review permit, lot line revision permit, and then two separate conditional use permits. One for shared parking on a separate lot and one for increased building footprint. So included in your submission package was over a dozen items that have been reviewed through the TAC process, including plan set, drainage analysis, peer reviews, traffic studies, and community space exhibits, to name a few. So this project, we've already been through an extensive review with the, with the technical advisory committee. And we actually started, it was a year ago tomorrow when we were at, here at Planning Board for a conceptual consultation. We then met with Technical Advisory Committee in January of this year for a work session and then returned back to this board in February this year for design review. Since then, we have been through five TAC meetings where we received our recommendation of approval in November of this year. This project also has gone through a peer review process for our stormwater and drainage analysis plans, as well as the traffic impact study and roadway plans. In addition, this project has also already received its certificate approval from the Historic District Commission in August of this year. And they had also been through an extensive work session process with the HDC, dating back to the summer of last year. This project is also gonna require two approvals through NHDES. The first being the alteration of terrain permit, which we submitted earlier this week, and a sewer connection permit. If you go to the next page, Peter.
I'm gonna interrupt you. My mistake, not yours. We need a motion to consider both the subdivision and site plan together. We'll vote on them separately, but we're considering everything all at once. So you don't have to make two presentations. Because I have a.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Apologize for that interruption.
So the project site is up on the screen here. It's located at the corner of Deer and Russell Street, commonly known as the Sheridan Parking Lot. So to the left of the page here is Maplewood Avenue. The railroad is to the top side of the lot and then Deer Street on the bottom and Russell Street up, splitting the project site with the existing Sheridan property. Also included in this application, shown in this inset up here, is the parcel of land that is currently a vacant lot that runs between the railroad and Russell Street. And then for the purposes of the lot line revision plan, the Sheridan property is also included in the, as part of the application. So the existing condition of the redevelopment lots is a large surface parking lot, which is mainly used for parking by the Sheridan Hotel. There's a large grout, ledge outcropping up at the intersection of Green Street here and then gravel strip that parallels the railroad. If you go to the next sheet, please. So the proposed site plan consists of three separate buildings on, actually each on an individual lot. Building one is located here at the corner of Maplewood and Deer. It's a four-story office building. Building two is the one in the middle that is at the corner of Russell and Deer Street. Building two is the subject of the conditional use permit request for increased building footprint, which I'll touch on a little bit later. It's a five-story mixed-use building. Basement-level parking. The first level consists of parking and mix of commercial spaces along the front, retail, restaurant uses to be determined. And then upper floor, 56 residential units. Building three is this long skinny one up on the corner of Green and Russell. That's another five-story mixed-use residential building. Again, first floor being residential lobby and commercial spaces and 24 residential units on the upper floors. This project also consists of significant onsite and offsite improvements, including the realignment of the intersection between, of Russell and Deer. As you're likely familiar, this intersection currently comes in at an awkward angle. So this, this project will square off that intersection and also create this, this large open space area at the corner, as well as some wide sidewalks along the frontage of the development site. This project also includes community space, which again, I'll get into more detail a little bit later. Lighting and landscaping, as well as stormwater management and utilities. Combined, all these site features together will greatly increase the pedestrian safety in this area, as well as providing pretty significant community space. Along the rear of the site, between the railroad and all three of the buildings, is the rear access drive, which is a shared pedestrian, bike, and vehicular way. It is the access point for the basement-level garage entrance, which is on this end of the building, and then the exit, which is over here. This, this drive is a one-way going from Maplewood through to Green Street. It also includes some traffic calming measures that were added. There's a couple of speed tables. There's one here and here, which were added as part of the traffic peer review process and the TAC review process. This rear area is also signed for pedestrian and bike use, as well as wayfinding signage for pedestrians. So the area, I'll touch on these briefly and get into a little more detail when I discuss the community space. But the area between Building one and Building two, we're referring to as the muse area. It's a community space area that has a couple seating areas, as well as some plantings. And then there's some activated spill-out areas from the retail spaces out of Building two and then another one out of Building one here. Then the area between Buildings two and three is the driveway entrance for the upper, or the ground-level parking, but is also designed to be a pedestrian-friendly area with concrete pavers, as well as flush granite curbing, to create a pedestrian connection through the site. So onsite parking is located within the Building two footprint. As I mentioned earlier, that is the building we're requesting the conditional use permit for to allow for up to a 40,000-square-foot footprint. This, this building contains, on the lower level, 94 parking spaces, shown in this upper inset here. And then on the ground floor has an additional 86 spaces, which also utilize puzzle lift systems, which will primarily be used by the Sheridan Hotel Valet, which is the subject of our second conditional use permit for the shared parking. So the parking demand for this, this site was calculated using the city's parking requirements. Because we're in the downtown overlay district, there is no parking or demand requirement for commercial uses. The 80 residential units were calculated at a 1.3 space per unit for 104 spaces. We are required to have 16 visitor spaces for the one, for five dwelling unit. The Sheridan Hotel has a parking demand of 136 spaces. And then also included in the parking demand calculation are 82 spaces for, that are, have a deed easement for the Deer Street condos, which are here, and then the condos that are within the Sheridan. All those spaces have been accounted for in the total parking between this, this Building two lot and the Sheridan lot. So the. You go to the next page, please. So grading and drainage. So as I mentioned previous, the existing condition of the, the site has, does not provide any stormwater treatment. All the stormwater runoff from the site, either sheet flows into the city's stormwater system untreated or sheet flows directly towards the railroad. So the proposed development will be providing stormwater treatment for all of the new buildings. So the proposed development will be providing stormwater treatment for all of the new buildings, as well as the, the pedestrian areas connecting in between the two buildings. Buildings one and two are connected into the same underground detention system. The detention system is made up of concrete chambers, which then outlet into a stormwater filtration unit prior to connecting into the city's system down on Maplewood Ave. The building two driveway has its own catch basin and stormwater filtration unit before tying into the Russell Street system, and then building three has its own detention system in the rear, which then again goes through another stormwater filtration unit before eventually connecting back into Russell Street. And as I mentioned previously, this, the stormwater design has been peer reviewed, and also, as we're requiring an alteration of terrain permit, this will again be reviewed by DES. If you go to the next sheet, please. So the utilities plan, all three buildings have their own utility services, the typical water, gas, sewer, and electric and communications for each individual building. All of those connection and tie-in points were reviewed by DPW through the TAC process. We also have quite a bit of additional conduit for the street lighting that will be added as part of this project. A couple of the larger utility upgrades that are, that are going to be a result of this project is the reconstruction of the water main in Russell Street from Deer to Green, and then there's going to be a significant amount of electrical upgrades for the neighborhood that is a requirement of Eversource. They currently have an easement that runs through the site that carries some of the electric from the north end down into the center of the city, so as part of this, that will need to be abandoned. So we have coordinated this design with them, where we're connecting in to some stub conduit they left here, adding a switchgear and a number of manholes, and basically reconfiguring that entire underground electrical system in this portion of town. If you go to the next sheet, please. So a large component of this project is the community space and offsite improvements that are being provided as part of the north end incentives, and as well as the conditional use permit for the 40,000 square foot footprint. So this project, as it is located in the north end incentive overlay districts, will be providing a minimum of 20% community space for buildings one and three, in order to get the extra story of building height, as well as required to provide the 30% for building two as part of the conditional use permit. So the total amount of community space being provided by this project is 38,695 square feet, which equals 39.8% of the total lot areas, which obviously exceeds the 20% required for the north end incentive, as well as the 30% for the conditional use permit. In addition to that, the, the project is also providing over 22,000 square feet of what we're referring to as public realm improvements. That is shown in the yellow on this. That area is not included in our community space calculations, however, we thought it was important to highlight it because it is a significant amount of, of offsite improvements being provided by this project, so we did want to highlight that as well. This project is also providing 31.2% open space on the development lot, where the requirement is only 5% for the CD5 zone that we are in. If you go to the next sheet, please. So as part of the submission package, we had included a landscape plan for the community space and offsite improvements that I just briefly went through. The proposed development is providing these landscape improvements, including an enhanced streetscape, plantings, open space area at the corner of Deer and Russell, as well as the community space areas, which I'll get into a little bit more detail now. So we are utilizing three separate community space types based off the city zoning ordinance. The first type is the pedestrian alley, which there are three areas, the muse area, which I briefly discussed earlier, as well as the pedestrian connection between buildings two and three, and then the shared accessway behind the three buildings. If you go to the next sheet here, I think. Yes. So this is the first area, which we've been referring to as the muse, and this is a 3D sketchup rendering of that area. This area connects the end of Portwalk Place through the site, which is the direction that we are looking here. This area was, was reviewed extensively and revised through the TAC process, and we also received some, some feedback through HDC as well, that has ended with this design here. So the, the design intent for this area was to create a usable and inviting space that was designed to draw people into the site, and so this was accomplished in a number of ways. First, by, you see how the, the entrance to the pedestrian area is flared open to try and draw people in, and also using lower plantings at, at both ends. So we were trying to avoid creating a visual barrier that, that made it feel more open and allow people to see that this is a space that, that I can walk through, sit down on a bench, spend time in. This area also has two seating spillout areas, one out of building two, which due to the grade change through this area, this, this seating area is on a raised platform, and then the second spillout seating area on building one is in more of a depressed area towards the back of this muse area. Additionally, we use this overhead catenary lighting with these, these circular fixtures that you can kind of see from a little bit farther away, as a, as a sort of a visual draw into the site to try and encourage people to come, come into the site. And then additionally, using the grade change from the high point, kind of here along Deer Street, as it slopes back to the railroad, we've incorporated these, these seating walls, the low seats on the left here, and then the higher seats on the right, along with some taller plantings in the back here, which, which screen the opening into one of the levels of the parking garage. If you go to the next sheet here, yeah. So the next area is the, the rear access drive here, which it's hard to see on the screen here, but we've incorporated concrete pavers, as well as a different color banding throughout the site. The design inspiration for this was Chestnut Street in front of the Music Hall, where they have the two different color pavers with the patterns that, that sort of define it as a pedestrian-friendly space, even though it is still a roadway. In our case, we're, while we're not a roadway, so it's pretty, going to be low traffic because it's only going to be a driveway servicing the buildings, we wanted to primarily design it as a pedestrian and bike area. If you go to the next sheet here. So this is a snipping from the, the HDC submission, which shows the rear of building two, and this is a pretty unique feature that was included in the back, is, is another way to draw some visual interest to the site. And this is a mural on the rear of building two that was, is created with a punched metal. I don't have much of the detail of that, it's more the architectural stuff, but it, we thought it was important to show, is this is kind of a, a big draw to this area, and will, will attract people to this site, and be a visual interest as people are walking through the site. If you go to the next sheet. So, and then as I mentioned, the, the third area is the area between buildings two and three, which is, is more of a straight pedestrian connection, but will allow visitors and guests of the Sheridan to have direct access to that rear pedestrian area. And then given our location in the site, this, this rear area will allow people to, depending on where they're coming from, either continue on with access down along Market Street to this park area, which I'll get into in a little bit, and then the additional parks further down Market Street that the city has developed through the years. And then coming down more to the southern side, we are basically right across the tracks from where the future North Mill Pond Trail is planned to connect in with Maplewood, so it really connects that, that whole Vaughn Mall, Portwalk Place connection through the city, out into the north end, and then wherever you're looking to go from there. The second area, the second type of community space is the, the wide sidewalk community space, so.
Can we go back?
Yeah, thank you. So the, the wide sidewalk community space, on our, our site, we don't have a lot of it, because we can only use what is, you know, on the lot. So it's, there's a small sliver on building one here, there's some in front of building two, and then again, up at the, the tip here, building three, that's included in that calculation. Also included in that area are the two land transfer areas that are shown in orange here, two and three. And the reason we included those in, in this wide sidewalk community space calculation is that we are, you know, part of that public realm improvement, where we're, you know, developing this whole plaza area. The only reason we're able to do this is because we are giving this land transfer to the city, and, and which allows us to fix this intersection. So we are taking credit for that area, where we have created this large open space area at the corner. So that, because of that realignment, and we have, we now have this area, there is a bit of a grade change between the street and this area. So to account for that, we, against the face of the building here, we, we have this ramp down into this area, and then as you come around Deer and Russell, we've used the, the planters, which also have seating walls on them, to kind of define that space, and also help us create that grade break, and then we have a couple sets of stairs going down. And as you come up around the corner, the, the grade sort of catches back up with the grade in the street, and it just blends back into the, the wide sidewalk heading down along building three. The final community space area is up here, it's this, this park area. So this area is currently overgrown and unusable. The existing vegetation within the railroad right-of-way, which is, this, this whole area right here is a big strip of trees that is not on the, on the parcel. So all of those will remain, which will maintain that buffer between the railroad and the park area. The rest of the area will be regraded and replanted with native ornamental grasses, and then along what will be the rear of a newly constructed sidewalk, adjacent to the city's future planned roundabout, will be some seasonal grasses and perennials, and then we, we have this little seating niche here, as a place for people to kind of get off the sidewalk. So if you go to the next sheet. So that is kind of all the community space landscaping, site plans. So I just wanted to take a minute and go through our, the permit requests that we, we are here for tonight. The first is the site plan review permit. So this, this project, as I had mentioned previously, has been before this board twice for conceptual consultation, peremptory design, as well as being before TAC multiple times, and has been thoroughly reviewed by all those boards, and we, we received that recommendation of site plan approval from TAC. The lot line revision, I think it's pretty straightforward. The existing parcel is already three separate lots, and that request is just allowing us to relocate those lot lines, so that each building is on its own individual lot, as well as taking care of the land transfers, one for the city to build this, this roundabout, and then the other two for the Russell Street realignment. For the conditional use permits, the first one is the conditional use permit for parking on a separate lot, which is permitted under the city of Portsmouth zoning ordinance. So the project meets the parking requirements of shared parking between the three proposed redevelopment parcels, the existing Sheridan Hotel and the Deer Street condos. The project is providing a total of 334 parking spaces, which is the required amount of spaces required to meet the zoning. The existing surface parking lot is used by the Sheridan Hotel for their valet and self-park operations. There's also an existing 82 deeded spaces for the Deer Street and Sheridan condos that can be assigned to, or the owners have the ability to assign those spaces to, to any lot, or any spot on either the Sheridan, Sheridan lot or the redevelopment parcels. And as I had outlined below, the, the project will be providing 180 spaces within building two, and there's 154 existing spaces on the Sheridan lot, which gets us to that 334 total. And then per the zoning ordinance, the, the other caveat of that is that the shared parking arrangement shall be secured by covenant, as accepted by the city, and recorded with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds, and the applicant understands that if the planning board grant the shared CUP, that, that will be a condition of approval. And the final CUP is for the increased building footprint of up to 40,000 square feet, which is permitted under section 105A 43 dot 43 of the zoning ordinance. The planning board may grant that conditional use permit for up to 40,000 square feet in the CD5 district if the following criteria are met. No story above the ground floor shall be greater than 30,000 square feet in the CD5 district. The upper floors of building two are 29,810 square feet. B, all ground floor parking shall be separated from any public or private street by a liner building. The ground floor parking areas are separated by the retail and commercial spaces on the first floor. C, at least 50% of the gross floor area on the ground floor shall be dedicated to parking. Parking on the ground floor comes out to a total of 64.2%. And then lastly, at least 30% of the, not lastly, at least 30% of the community space shall be assigned, or property shall be assigned as community space. And as I detailed earlier, all our community space numbers, the lot 118 MAP 28, which is the lot in question, we have a total of 40.4% of calculated community space, and that includes the, we, we use the park area community space to add on to the community space on, physically on MAP 118 Lot 28, to achieve that number. And then the development shall apply with all applicable standards of the ordinance and the city's land use regulations, and the project meets all of the city's zoning ordinance and land use regulations. So that is all I have. Thank you for listening to me drone on for a while, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I had one, just a quick one before the whole board. Your calculations for percentages are related to the newly configured lots that you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. Or question? Yes, Andrew.
With regard to your public space and community space amenity and the land transfer, is the development team installing and executing any sort of monument or gardens, whatever that land transfer space is going to be used for within the development scope?
Not sure I follow the question. You're talking like property monumentation?
When you give the city that land in the land transfer?
Yeah.
Or is the development team doing anything to that land?
So the land transfer area three, which is going to be this one, the development will be reconstructing this intersection, so they will be doing the work in that area. The other two are for the city to be constructing this roundabout. So both.
So you're including them in your calculation, however, it is the city's responsibility to be changing them?
Two of the three, correct.
Okay.
Yes. But the, yeah, so the, but the, and the project is doing all the work on Russell Street, including this corner, as well as all of the work.
Primarily focused on the open space calculation and the percentage thereof, and so trying to get an understanding of how it was arrived at.
Yes, yeah.
And then my second question is, was there a shadow study done on the entire development project?
I believe this came up at HDC. I was not involved in that process, so I'm not entirely sure.
The reason for the question, and maybe this can be answered a different way, is if your building is 60 feet high, and 233 Bond Street is 50 feet high, and you have a five-foot sidewalk that is sandwiched between those two buildings, I feel as though that space will not be giving, or getting sunlight throughout the majority of the day, given the orientation of it, and so I'm wondering if we've looked at that.
So the, the rear accessway, and I do believe I failed to mention this in my presentation, is 20 feet wide, which is a requirement of the fire department, so they can get their apparatus behind there. So we, we are 20 feet minimum from the property line, and then there's the entire railroad right-of-way between our buildings and 233 Vaughn. So I, I don't know if that was studied during the HDC process or not.
I feel as though relevant, just because you're directing your traffic, both pedestrian and vehicular traffic, to that space, and if it's labeled as community space, but does not get any sunlight, it's really hard to spend a lot of time there.
Yeah, so it's our Ryan Plummer, Two International Group. So I don't remember if we formally submitted anything. We did do, go through shadow studies. I think when we looked at the shadow studies, the primary focus was on the muse at the time. Backside of the site, from what I remember seeing, I don't think we had any issues there. To Neil's point, we have 20 feet on the back passageway, and I think 233 Vaughn's not far enough back where there's probably not going to be much of a, a shadow cast there. You know, the muse, that area is, you know, relatively narrow, but we found that there's still quite a bit of natural light throughout the day that can get into that area. The additional lighting that we placed in there is meant to try to help out, you know, when it gets more towards nighttime hours, and some of those shadows get cast there. But in terms of the backside of the site, I think we're far enough away where those shadow studies didn't indicate that we are going to have a major issue with a building like 233 Vaughn. like 233 Vaughn.
I'd just like to back up Mr. Simonas. I, I think I recalled asking for a shadow study when we, when this came before us in March or February.
And it could have been submitted, so I, maybe I'm failing to remember and you guys may have it on file. It would just be nice to have it here.
If it was, it would have been through the HDC process and prepared by the architects.
I just feel like it was pertinent to the team we had here.
Are you proposing lighting on the back?
Uh, yes. So there is, there is lighting on the back. There was a photometric plan that was included in the package. The, yeah, so there is a lot, obviously along the streets, we have the city's standard historic fixtures. And then there, there is, I believe, building mountain, building mounted lighting along the back to light that whole area.
In the picture that you showed us of the space between Building One and Building Two, you had talked about how it was a really big grade. Kind of in the middle of that picture, it looks like there's like a total cutoff. Are there stairs there or is it just a slope? And if a slope, how steep of a slope it is?
Are you talking back here?
Right there, yeah. Just like right across between the buildings. It looks like a sharp cut off.
So it is a, it's a consistent grade from Deer Street back to the railroad. That area there is, is kind of sunk down in. And the way we have it graded, the, if you're coming from Deer Street going this way, there's this planter bed and then you hit a set of stairs which goes down into here. And then if you keep going, there's a ramp on the backside of it to get into this area, which is sunk down.
But the pathway from the front to the back across the buildings is all, it's a ramp. It's a consistent, they're able to, there's no stairs is what I'm getting at.
Correct, yes.
So another question I have, you have this sort of back access, the 20 foot in the back. Is that where you expect, I mean, these buildings are going to need deliveries, they're going to need trash pickup. How is, all of that can be handled? Because I know that once these places are built, those are questions that come back to bite us sometimes if we don't ask them upfront.
Yeah, so loading, we have proposed a couple loading zones out on the street, which will need to go to the Parking and Traffic Safety Committee for approval. Similar to other developments in downtown area, they'd be signed for loading early morning hours before the meters came into effect. Trash pickup would be done in the rear using rollout bins, so it'll all be stored within the building. Truck would pull up, roll the bins out, dump them on the truck, bins back in the building, truck goes away. So there'd be no, there, there will never be bins sitting outside waiting for pickup or anything like that. They'll all be contained in the building, but that will be in that rear area.
So I guess my issue with the loading zone is if it's only in the morning and you have a lot of residential units, there's a lot of deliveries that happen in the afternoon and the evenings when you're going to residential units. I know Amazon comes to my house pretty late in the day. So I'm just thinking, you know, you might want to make sure when you ask for that space, that you ask for that space for a period of time and make, just because I feel like it's going to get used, at least a portion of it. Maybe you don't need as much room as you need for maybe a commercial space, but I would like to keep that in mind as you're asking for that with PTS.
Yeah, understood.
That's good. I'm good.
Could I just jump in only because it's picking up right on this point? This was my, this was a major question that I have for this development. And can we elaborate on deliveries? Because in my vast experience in HDC and so forth and living downtown, it's not three feet or 10 feet more of building height that makes a building feel large. It's, it's these deliveries and what happens on the, on grade level. There will be a massive amount of waste from, that has to be taken from this building. And if there are eventually, you know, there's commercial spaces, food service, it's going to be intense. And I'd want to know where the drop off areas are for vehicles on the street. Are we giving up parking spaces for that? I, I think a development of this scale really needs to accommodate it on the site rather than depend on, on the street. And I, I looked for it, I just, I couldn't find a clear, there almost needs to be a plan specifically labeled, a delivery plan and, you know, the management of deliveries and things being taken from the building. It's going to be, I'd hate for all of that to spill into the street and for the project to not be successful because the community is feeling the, the pressure laterally into the street. Because that's what happens at, you know, we see it all the time downtown, truck deliveries that they stop the truck right in the middle of the street and there's nothing else they can do.
Yeah, so the, the two loading areas that we have proposed are these two spaces here and then these two spaces up here. And I think to your point with, with some of the, the commercial users, I, I believe the intent is not to have any, or I don't know if you want to speak to your intent on the, some of the retail spaces. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, we obviously don't know who the tenants will necessarily be for those commercial spaces yet. I think there's a possibility there could be a couple of restaurants in there. We don't expect there to be more than that, just based on demand and the amount of space that we have.
And I hope there is. I mean, that would be wonderful if there was.
Yeah, we'd love the activity too. To Neil's point, we have those couple of loading areas. I think we went through it pretty thoroughly with TAC. The space between Building Two and Three could definitely be used. I mean, if all of these spaces got occupied, there is some ability for overflow. The backside of the site has a 20-foot wide lane that was designed to have two fire trucks be able to pass each other. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there. You know, if we had a residential furniture delivery, that was going to be parked there for hours at a time. I think probably they can go to the backside of the site. There's an opportunity there. It's going to be easier for them because they can drive right through that area. In those loading areas out towards the street, maybe better for, you know, the box trucks, FedEx, gets the mailroom quick. They're kind of in and out. But there's a lot of opportunity around the site for the trucks that'll be parked longer term, I think, too.
And I, I think too, during the TAC process, at one point, the full-time loading zone question had came up. And after further discussion, we kind of reverted back to the six to nine. I, I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head the, the details of those discussions, but it, it did come up and we ended up with, with what you have in front of you.
It's something to further consider because, and I wasn't even thinking about, you know, people moving in and out of these units and mover, moving trucks and. It's an urban setting. It gets busy.
Yeah.
Great.
Peter, I'm Ben Greg.
Currently on Russell Street, there's parking pretty much from Deer down to Market Street, I guess, or, I mean, there's some, is that, is most of that parking that's there today going to remain?
The, the parking on Russell Street is largely unchanged. I think we're down a couple spaces. And that was due to some of these, some of these bump outs and some of the plantings at the Sheridan driveway and the site driveway. Where we lose more spaces, and I don't have the exact count off the top of my head, is at, at the intersection here. Because of how the current configuration is, where it's just like one kind of really large radius turn, the parking goes right up to the intersection. So to, to fix that, as, as we fix that intersection and sort of clean this up to a, what's, what's a more safer conditions for pedestrians, where you have these bump outs for the crosswalks, you end up losing a couple of spaces on either end. So that, that's kind of where we lost some is improving the pedestrian experience in that area because anyone that's just kind of walked through their nose, it's, you know, look, look both ways twice and take your life in your hands currently.
So, and related to parking, you noted the, the 1.3 spaces required under the ordinance. Is, are you guys comfortable with that meeting your overall needs?
Yes.
What is that?
Could be interfering with cell phones, microphones.
Is anyone's cellphone up against the mic?
Not mine.
Mine's down on the floor.
I'm guilty.
Yeah, so I was just kind of making sure that you're, you're comfortable with that. I mean, I, in some cases, that, that number might not be enough. And I just, while it's a required amount, want to make sure that, because you're filling in a lot of space by putting this building in here and there's not going to be a lot of alternatives for space to recreate more parking.
Yeah, so we have, it's the 1.3 per unit plus there's the visitor parking requirement. And then the other thing we did look at was the, the Sheridan Hotel has historical parking data. So we were able to look at that to see what their absolute peak was, what their, you know, typical average was. And so that way we can feel comfortable that we're providing enough for them as well as our new uses. So we were able to look at all that and we are comfortable with, with what we have.
You good, Peter?
Yes, thank you.
Your drawing, you guys are referring to the, the backside of the building. I guess it's the western, that 20, 20-foot wide driveway, if you will.
Yep.
The, do you expect a conflict with the fact that you've got no parking fire lane signs all along that side of the building, but you're talking about possibly using it for deliveries?
So that was a requirement of the fire department to put those signs up.
I don't know how that works in town, but does people look the other way when a truck parks there?
I'm not sure.
Okay. You do have the signs, but you're saying you can use it for delivery?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think the intent of the signs is so people don't park their car there and go for a walk.
Okay. Versus delivery.
I'm not, I'm not sure on the, the code requirements of that.
Corey.
Oh, sorry.
Just to build upon that, can you, can you walk me through, Mr. Hanson, about the, kind of the signage so that pedestrians coming in are aware that there may be vehicles on this?
Yep.
And then also so the vehicles may be aware that there's pedestrians. I mean, it's great that you have the speed humps, but there's no stop signs before the, the other pedestrian way or both pedestrian ways come through. And also to build upon that, is the intent to have just commercial vehicles? And if so, is there any signage indicating that? There's no personal vehicles to be used on this or what?
So the, I'll take your first question first. So we put the, we located the speed tables right before where those pedestrians come out for that reason. Because that, that's where the cars will have to slow down to get over those and it'll give pedestrians and cars alike the opportunity to see each other. This, the, the rear driveway is, is primarily for access to the basement level garage for So the, the entrance to the lower garage is here on, off the back and then the exit's here.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I thought everything was coming in through the other entrance.
No, the, the two parking levels are not connected within the building.
I see. Gotcha. Okay. But other than that, there's no additional signage or anything to make people aware of kind of what's going on?
I mean, we, we have, it's signed at both ends for pedestrians and bicycles. There's do not enter signs on the Green Street side. There's private way, speed limit signs on the Maplewood side. It's, it's pretty heavily signed.
Okay.
Just, just to elaborate a little bit more on, on this delivery, on this, you know, the delivery questions and the vehicular and truck traffic. I, I think this is solvable, just, you have, that back access drive is huge. I mean, it's, it goes the full length of the building, whether or not freight elevators are back there or not. But I think this is just a matter of, you know, designating and managing that, that passage for all deliveries, you know, in lieu of, you know, the parking spaces in the front. I understand there's going to be small box trucks in the front that'll pull up really quick, run in their package and leave. But you, I think you clearly have the, the space to manage a delivery plan on the backside of this building. I'm not, so I'm not suggesting any major changes. I'm suggesting perhaps it's, it's just considered in the plan that you have in a more, you know, robust way. I don't know if it's a stipulation or, or not, but I'm very excited about the project. I just make sure it's successful.
We have to be careful. I know where it is a fire lane.
Yeah.
And it is, I agree that there's room for two trucks to go by each other in 20 feet. But if you designate it as a loading zone, I can see possible conflicts with the fire department, you know, just something to think about.
I just have one more question. So because all of the parking, or most of the parking is all in the one building and Building Two, but you have a lot of residents in Building Three, exactly how is their pathway to get from, if they're parking at Building Two, I mean, are they, how do they get there?
So there is a pedestrian connection that goes under this driveway. There's a dashed line here.
Yep.
It's an, it's a, basically a basement wall and there's a hallway that connects the parking in Building Two into this elevator core in Building Three, so that people that live in Building Three can walk through the tunnel into the elevator.
Okay, thank you. I missed that.
Two questions. Your traffic and traffic flow data has been revised, reviewed by more people than a lot of things and I am not an engineer, so I'm not here to tell you it's wrong. Just curious. On the peak weekday hour, it said there are 62 trips. And then you're saying that there's also 46,000 square feet of office space, which generally there are, there's about 100 to 150 square feet of office space per person. So that's math, there's about 300 people in this office portion alone, which 62 trips per day or per morning and 300 people coming to an office on a daily basis just doesn't, I, I don't know. Am I missing something?
I'm not entirely sure. I, it's probably, I mean, so there's no parking for the office users on site, so that may have been factored in. I, I'd have to reread the study myself. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Not that it's the development team's problem, but where are they parking? So I can understand better.
Bounder garage likely, given where it is.
Just quick on that. So some of these spaces are also for the Sheridan Hotel. And generally speaking, there's some, those work together. The hotel guests are going to be out during the day. The office users or retail users could potentially use some of those spaces. To Neil's point, they weren't required per the city zoning, so there probably will be some overflow. But we think we can accommodate most of those office tenants inside with the hotel spaces because, because those guests are out during the day and that includes during summer months. So.
So those will not be necessarily assigned to the hotel guests versus the office users?
Exactly, yeah.
So just to follow up on that, from a parking perspective, you're treating the Sheridan, I'm going to just call it the Sheridan property, and this property as one parking source?
Yes.
To share.
Yeah.
My second question and last question. You may have alluded to it, but is there a barrier between the back 20-foot pedestrian and car throughway and the railroad?
So yes, the, the plan is to have a fence along that vehicular accessway. That was kind of a request at the last TAC meeting that that go in. I believe that request needs to go back to the HDC to get their sign off on what the fence will look like.
So it'll be your fence?
Yes.
And maintained by you all?
Yes.
And does that need approval from the railroad? Do we know?
Don't know. We, so we do, we do need to work with the railroad on a couple pedestrian crossings and the relocation of their signals. That was one of the recommended stipulations that all of our correspondents with the railroad get copied to DPW, so they're included in all that. We also, on one of our easement plans, we do need a construction easement, temporary construction easement from the railroad. So we will need to engage them for a number of different things.
The reason for the question and to highlight a lot of the pedestrian throughways that you have created, which are, I think, great in concept, those would not be so great if there, there'd be a blockage or not this great conduit between this development, 3S Arts Base side of the town and then Vaughn Mall area. And so to maintain and really create that continuity, I feel as though that pedestrian walkway with the railroad is critical to the rest of this development.
So when I say pedestrian walkway, I want to be clear, I'm referring to the existing crossing on Maplewood.
Yeah.
Not any sort of, we're not proposing any sort of new crossing. We are actually actively trying to discourage people from what is illegally crossing the tracks.
Okay, so the fence.
It'd be a liability for, for the development. So that's the intent is to, people coming up through here, if they're going to the north end, they would likely just have to come around here and walk the extra couple hundred feet that everyone shortcuts now.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and then again, same thing going this way. If you're, you know, heading out Market Street, that's, you know, kind of where you'd be using that, that direction for.
And you definitely said there are a bunch of wayfinding signs and.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Corey.
So just to, just to clarify, so the parking is intended, some of the parking may be open to the public for those, I guess, for the retail users?
No.
No.
There, no, there are.
There, no, none of the parking will be public.
Okay.
On site.
So if you're a retail user, you won't be able to park there?
Correct.
Okay.
Retail patron.
Yeah, retail patron.
Because it's closed, because those garages are going to have swipe access, tenants would be able to, guests would be more challenging. So if there's workers there in that space, they would potentially be able to use it.
Okay, fantastic, that makes sense, thank you. And so just a couple of things, I was looking at the 2021 versus the, what you guys showed to us this time last year versus what we're showing now. One thing, you decided to include the actual driveway itself on the, that comes into the second level of parking as community space. Did anything change in the design between last year and this year to make it more of a community space?
I believe when we initially had it drawn, it was just a paved asphalt driveway, curbs.
Okay.
So that's why we brought it up with the flush to the curb. We took the pavers into the site. And then also, I don't recall whether or not there is a connection, this connection down to the rear access. I don't know if that, I don't recall if that connection was there at that point or not.
It shows it was, I was just seeing what possibly changed. And my other question is, I know you originally, I mean, it said potential, but you had like a community park in front of the Sheraton on the, on the, on the Market Street Russell corner there, just curious.
So that kind of went away through the tack process. It was sort of alluded to us that that space wasn't, wasn't really desirable for a park.
Okay.
It was removed from the plans through that process.
Sure. And then my last question is, given the volume of parking here and, you know, what we're seeing in other developments, are there any EV chargers going in or anything like that or any solar on the building? And there was a lot of electrical upgrades, obviously, through this, around this entire site. So I'm curious what's happening on that front, given it's, you know, pretty much a dead flat roof on top, so.
So while the roof is flat, we have a lot of mechanical equipment up there. So we looked at putting solar on the roof. It would be very scattered and inefficient to do panels up there because of our mechanical. We are prepping for EV chargers. So we've oversized the electrical service to be able to accommodate. I can't remember the percentage, but it was over 50% EV chargers eventually. We're not going to put all of them in up front, partially because of the cost, partially because we don't know everyone's going to use them, but we're at least going to have the capacity there to have it. And we're going to have a handful out of the gate. The exact percentage is kind of TBD, but we're at least going to have the preparation for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hanson, there can be 80 residential units, is that correct?
Yes.
Are they all the same size, number of bedrooms?
It's a mix. I think it's one to three beds.
Mostly two and, mostly two and three bedrooms. They range anywhere from 1,100 square feet. I think the largest is somewhere around like 2,300, 2,400.
Okay, so majority are two to three bedrooms?
Yeah.
I just want to make you aware that, well, 8 KPH, which is on tonight's board also, is, they have two spaces per unit. And the West End parking garage, I'm sorry, the West End Yards parking study showed that two bedroom units needed two spaces. So I just want to make you aware that using the current regs at 1.3, you may be short parking and may want to think about contingencies because West End Yards had to build another 120 spaces. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Another parking question. So I'd like to know if you've determined how many public spaces are actually going to be lost on Russell Street and Deer Street? Since you've got retail space coming in and there's no retail parking, that's, those public spaces are, you know, would likely be used by that. They're also be used by people, our residents and our businesses up on the hill, so it's
Yeah.
Kind of critical when you have spaces getting lost that they're not, that they're not lost.
Patrick's counting. Three on Deer. Well, he's counting. The reconfiguration of the parking on the roadway does need to be reviewed and approved by Parking Traffic Safety Committee as well. So it will get a second look there as well.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a related question? Of the three spaces that are being lost on Deer, are some or all of them being lost to loading zones versus bump outs? Or?
The loading zones are only loading for three hours in the morning, so they're counted as a parking space.
Okay.
Yeah. And that was, I, you may have just jogged my memory. I believe that's why we went away from a full-time loading zone, so we weren't cutting into the parking supply any farther.
Okay, thank you.
And only because we're, if I could, Chairman?
Yeah.
Because we're, I just want to grab this point of the conversation. That might help solve the, making that a full-time loading zone might actually help. I understand it, the stress that it, that the deliveries fiasco might cause, might be worth the loss of, you know, parking space or a couple. So I don't know where that conversation was had to either make it, you know, to assign hours to the loading zone, but buildings of this size are going to require constant, constant deliveries and removals of things.
Neil, did I understand that that was not fully resolved with parking, traffic and safety or loading zone question, or do you have that?
No, this has not been to the Parking Committee.
So all these discussions we're having about, we can simply advance this and make a recommendation that those be solved. Very good, thank you.
Go ahead.
No one else. There was a letter in our packet from Attorney Phoenix regarding the condominiums and the parking spaces for them. They're obviously very concerned about which spaces they're going to have used because they don't want tandem use, tandem type spaces, which you have quite a few in different parts of this parking arrangement. So have you, or will you be designating specific spaces for them to use?
So Ryan, Two International's attorney, also submitted a letter responding to that, I believe. And I think we've made it clear that those spaces will not be put in the tandem spaces.
You might have heard earlier, we had the capital improvements plan. We talked about the Russell Market intersection a little bit and we've made a recommendation that council consider $2 million for studying that intersection. I looked at it earlier and gave it some thought. A roundabout is certainly one option, but where the study really looked at only, the current study you guys did only looked at a stop sign or a roundabout. It didn't look at possible realignments, possible signal, which the Planet Public Works Director mentioned was another possibility. Would you object to a condition that didn't affect most of the project and just held off on that end for that study to be completed?
So the roundabout is not in our scope of work. It would be a city project and we are showing the roundabout at the request of the city.
I understand that.
So if, yes, if that roundabout were to be converted to something else by the city, we would not object to that. I don't know if that was your question or not.
So if instead of conveying the land and fee today, it was just a reservation at this point pending the results of the study? So you could come back if it became a roundabout, great. If it became something else, it might require a slight realignment. You're okay with that?
I mean, other than the land transfer, the roundabout's not really part of this application. So I'm not entirely sure.
I think any other intersection would be tighter and probably not involve any land transfer, that's, but you, Joe, you had something on this?
Yeah, on this subject, I, my initial reactions to the roundabout, I was scratching my head as well when I initially saw it, but the fact of the matter is, whatever, whatever the design ends up being, we're going to need as much of that property around that intersection as possible. I would, I would, I don't think there's a scenario where we would not want that for whatever the, even if it's a, you know, if we're doing, whatever the design is, it might not be, you know, a roundabout. Why we would not simply take those parcels as presented?
Well, I can explain that. If you, if you take the circular segments, you're basically committing to a roundabout. If the Market Street master plan was followed, which proposed a T-intersection, the intersection would actually get tighter. And the land area that's currently used for the intersection would be well in excess of what's needed. The city wouldn't need any of this land at all. I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a T-intersection. T-intersections behave differently than four-way intersections and T-intersections are unusual. They are a type of roundabout. There are details about the way this roundabout is sketched that I have issues with, but that's not a part of this application. So I just feel in concert with what we just did earlier, if we have the reservation, make it a condition that it's reserved, don't put any buildings on it, it's there if it's needed. But if it's conveyed with specific geometry today, I think it's locking in the idea.
Hi, just as you folks are talking, Patrick Cremes with Ty &amp; Bond. Just looking at the land transfer areas in the green, if, you know, certainly if it's not teed, it would just become part of that park. It's already shown as community space, so there's really no change there. And I do think at the corner, just reserving the ability to have that land areas for additional land for the T-intersection would benefit the city.
That's what I'm saying, a reservation, but.
Yeah, exactly, I think we're saying the same thing. Thank you.
But I don't understand why an excess of land would be a problem for the city. Why would we not want, why would we not want an excess of land at that intersection?
Well, as a champion of private property writes, I'm just concerned about taking private property. You know, if we don't need it, the city shouldn't take it unless there's compensation.
Mr. Chairman, I can provide guidance from the Public Works Director. The thought is that the extra space will most likely be needed to redirect traffic and deal with the area during construction. So it would be the recommendation of the city to tackle all of the land, even though at the end of the day, it may be excess for that purpose.
I could even imagine 20 parking spaces there.
Wait, 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 what, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we are, we are providing a construction easement over the entire, the entirety of this 119 Lot 4 for the city for whatever they deem to do.
I think that's a different, what you're, what the manager's saying is a different issue than what I've been saying and what the Vice Chairman was saying. It doesn't preclude anything. I'm just saying, rather than have an absolute fee transfer today, just reserve it. You're not proposing to put a building there. It doesn't affect your approvals that hopefully will be coming on the rest of the project.
Yep.
It just keeps, it keeps options open and makes the study real. That's, that's the, that's my reason. And if the board doesn't agree, the board doesn't agree.
I don't understand the logic on it. I would have to say I don't agree. I'm just one of few, so.
Well, I've designed these things and you don't need the space unless it's a roundabout, so, you know, and that might be a conclusion. And the Public Works Director did say that.
Right, I think to handle it this way preserves all options.
Okay, anything else, questions of the applicant? I'm sorry, I kind of took us off on a tangent there. Yes, Jim?
I think this is for Mr. Plummer, a question. I was looking at the areas of the fifth floor on building two and building three, the top fifth floor.
Yep.
And I came up with 35,000 square feet.
You're talking both buildings combined?
Yes.
Sounds about right.
Okay, so would you know what that's going to retail for as far as a price per square foot?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I mean, you got to keep in mind that all of that square footage isn't sellable too. So if you divide it out, the common areas aren't, the 35,000 is total with common areas, mechanical, electrical, everything.
All right. Would, would $800 a square foot seem reasonable?
On just this, on just the livable square footage, that's higher than we're likely going to get in terms of what we're looking at right now. Obviously, we're trying to project a recession too, potentially, but.
I only use that number because a condo across the tracks and Jim Burge's property sold for that a couple of months ago. So I just thought for a number, I could use that, so.
Sure.
And construction costs would be about $400, $500 a square foot?
Off the top of my head, I don't want to quote that because I've got construction costs, land costs, soft costs, everything kind of grouped in, so.
All right, well, again, I'm just trying to ballpark this because I'm trying to understand the value to you with granting the additional stories. And it comes out between 10 and 15 million dollars. Is that not fair?
You're talking in profit or?
Well, yeah, the excess value. After you build it and you have your set's value, what you put into it, that will be your net gain.
I don't know if we have that much in it, but I'd like to think we would.
This is getting a little bit beyond one of the criteria.
I'll have a point to you, Mr. Chair. Trust me.
Okay, well, let's, let's assume for the sake of a very brief continuation, what, where are you going with it?
Well, if we can agree on, say, 10 million. I'm trying to equate the value that the applicant's going to get compared to the value of what the city's going to get for community space.
It's an interesting notion. It's not in our regulations, though. Unless, unless you can point a section of the regulations.
Well, it kind of is inferred that.
Where does it say?
Well, we're, you know, the applicant's giving us space, the city's space, and we're giving him something. So in my mind, it's kind of like a swap. He's gaining something and the city's gaining something. So I'm trying to see if these two kind of mesh in a way that's equitable.
But I think, doesn't that require expertise beyond anything on this board in terms of assigning a value to that community space?
Well, if we all humans, we all can kind of, kind of look at it and say, is this a fair swap?
Unless you can point to something in the ordinance, I don't think it's appropriate to proceed that way. Sorry, I appreciate, it's creative. I don't think it's in the ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? Yes, Cory?
Last, last one for me anyways. Since I've been looking at that roundabout and everything else, I noticed on the lot line revision, that the very top sliver is in the 100-foot wetland buffer.
Are you talking about the roundabout?
Yeah, I'm just.
So I, again, the roundabout is not part of this application. We didn't design it.
No, I understand. The mitigation of the invasive species in that to create the park, does that have to go through Conservation Commission and get a wetland conditional use permit for that tiny spot up in the corner?
We would probably just stay out of it.
So that is to remain, so?
I don't know exactly where the line is and I don't, I'm not even sure if the line on this plan.
It's on the lot line revision plan.
Okay. Yeah, if it really is just a small sliver, we would likely just stay out of it to avoid having to go through that process.
Okay, I mean, it's a little bit bigger than a small sliver. It might make the park look a little funky, given the number of invasives up there, but just be aware of it.
Anything else from the board? About to open a public hearing. Are we good? Open the public hearing on this? Anybody here to speak to or against this application?
Good evening, Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. In light of all the stuff that's coming up in regards to parking and deliveries and all of that, I would ask that you defer this until they've come back from parking and traffic safety. It just seems that there are a lot of unknowns and that are, that could impact this. It was originally suggested that perhaps they put parking underneath some of the other buildings. I think they have some ledge to deal with, but I don't know what other issues are underground there. I do know that the second floor has a terrace or whatever you want to call it. It's a very nice open deck. For those of you who are interested in environmental things, originally it was kind of hinted that it might be a living roof, but now it's a beautiful deck for the tenants, although a lot of them have balconies if I'm correct. So I would just ask that you think about all of the things that came to mind. Many of you had issues regarding the parking and the signage and that word. And I did want to clarify that the reason why the area behind that little beautiful parking area is, the 20-foot, it's 20 feet wide, because when the fire department shows up, they have these legs that hang off the side of the truck. In order to go up that height, they have to put them down and they need a minimum of 18 feet. And that's why when they look at streets like, I can't even think of the name of it right now, but it's behind the plumbing place on the corner of Bridge and stuff, but anyway, they need, they need a minimum of 18 feet. But anyway, they need a minimum of 18 feet. That's what they need in order to put their legs out to support the truck. If you want to see what it looks like at Christmas time, the City of Dover puts up their Christmas decorations on City Hall, and they use a fire truck. And to do that, they have to put those legs out to get that height. So that's why that road has to be 20 feet. It's not so that two can go by each other. It's so that one can put up its ladder. So please consider letting tack, not tack, but parking and traffic safety. Look at this before you guys make your mind up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here or on Zoom to...? Yes.
Good evening, folks. My name is Larry Gormley from Hopeful Phoenix Gormley &amp; Roberts. Ms. Moreau, I understand the mistake. That was my letter, not Phoenix's. But that's why I'm here, is the letter that I sent to this board on October 12th. In that letter, I outlined why stacking the parking for units, there are 29 units, nine of them commercial, which can't be stacked, 20 that are utilized on a first-come, first-served basis. We've utilized this easement for 35 years without issue. That's changed in the last 18 months. And we really don't know what's going to go on. We've gotten commitments that the parking would not be stacked, but then the developers' representatives stood up and said, "Those condo parking spaces can be put anywhere." So there seems to be a disconnect. As a result, I would ask this board to make the non-stacking of these spots a condition of approval so that these people, who have relied on this parking for three and a half decades, at least have that security going forward that someone can't change their mind and say, "Well, now it is going to be stacked." So I share people's concerns about the parking. We are in a litigation with Port Harbor Land. It doesn't concern you, but it is going to impact, well, if we prevail, and I feel strongly that we will, if we prevail, that is going to impact the parking in this garage, access where we park and how our parking is handled within the garage. So I think that's going to clarify in the next 60 or 90 days, at least that's my hope. So it is our profound wish that the non-stacking be made a condition of approval, and I suggest there's nothing reckless about waiting to let this play out because I think parking is going to be a significant issue for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak too far against this application? Still no hands raised? Going to close the public hearing. Public hearing's closed. It's one public hearing. We have two matters. It was the board's pleasure. We have, I think, subdivision first if we choose to proceed.
Can I ask a question of the city attorney, or retired city attorney?
Mr. Sullivan?
Attorney Sullivan, can I ask you, could you come down so I could ask you a quick question? Could you just let us know if we legally can make a kind of stipulation that was just requested of us regarding using non-stack packing for the 24, I believe it's 24 parking spaces? Are we allowed to do that legally? That's all I want to know.
No, I think that matter is outside the city's concern, frankly. It's a matter of litigation between those parties. The developer has an obligation to show you that he's providing the parking that's required, not obligated to show you that he hasn't otherwise allocated it. And it's between those two parties in a different forum than this to resolve that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I also have a question on that matter.
I understood the applicant to say they were not stacking the parking for those units.
I thought he said that.
That was part of the presentation. So it's part of the record already.
Just to clarify, a tandem spot counts as two spaces.
Excuse me?
A tandem spot counts as two spaces. Therefore, in this capacity, it's all the same to us.
I don't disagree. I just wanted to know whether or not legally we could do that since it was asked of us.
I was also clarifying that.
And just to elaborate a little bit more on that question, just for clarity, the project meets our parking requirements.
As shared parking, I believe it does.
So anything outside of...
It's not ours.
Any, right. We can't go outside of, they meet our requirements. It's as simple as that.
If an applicant says they're going to do something and they don't do it, that can be a problem later. It's effectively the same thing as what the attorney requested for because they made it a part of their proposal. I don't know what that was.
It's not me. It was over there.
I don't find ourselves in a little bit more discussion here, but is it appropriate, just to clarify one other thing about earlier statements that were made at this point? We can continue to discuss? Okay. And it was my concern that I brought up, having to do with deliveries. And I think this is not a difficult thing to solve. I think the developer could easily solve it with the amount of activity around the building. And their next stop is traffic and safety, where I think, if there's a motion to be made, a stipulation could be that a plan be developed specifically for deliveries for their next stop and that it be corrected, it be decided there. In other words, I don't want, I don't believe that that concern should stop this project for, you know, a number of months. It just doesn't make any sense. I think that it's solvable.
Unfortunately, we didn't ask if that was scheduled.
Say that again?
We didn't ask if that was scheduled, unfortunately. I assume it is.
The traffic and safety meeting?
Right.
Well, we were told that it was a requirement.
It's in the queue, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
We have two, we have a subdivision application. It's pretty simple, other than the roundabout question.
I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like.
Well, I had a, well, we can talk about it after a motion if we get there. But before we do that, I don't know what good it does the applicant unless we move on to the site plan application. But let's go ahead and do this lot line first. It is the first thing. So if you wish to proceed.
I'd make a motion that we vote to find that the subdivision, which is the lot line revision application, meets the standards and requirements set forth in the subdivision rules and regulations to adopt the findings as fact as presented.
I can't make a motion, but in keeping with what I said earlier, I had marked up a revision to say, to grant the approval with lot line relocation shown for map 125, lot 21, and 118, 28, 124, 12 with the following conditions, not stipulations, and a new condition saying portions of lots 119-4 and 119-11C approximately as shown to be conveyed at the City of Portsmouth that are to be reserved for possible future conveyance to the city following additional study of the Market Street-Russell Street intersection by the city and presentation to the planning board for review and final determination.
Are the conveyance of those lands helping them meet their requirement for the increased footprint? Right. So we're basically, by deferring that...
I think if you remove them, they would still exceed the percentage for community space.
Is there a scenario by deferring it where there's more...
It doesn't change that, actually, because it's, I think they counted it anyway.
But is there a scenario, if we're deferring that transfer, where there's more or less land conveyed?
That's why I said approximately.
I'm just, I'm failing to understand why we wouldn't just close it right now and...
Because it creates more options. This is locked into a very specific geometry. It meets and bounds on it. And if a revision to that is needed, you got to go back to the applicant anyway. And the study isn't done. We just said to the city council, "Study it for 2 million bucks." Why should we lock that into one result?
Isn't the roundabout the worst-case scenario as far as land area? Right? I think that's why I'm not understanding. It could never be more. It could never be more.
If the roundabout is improperly sized, it could be more. Roundabouts function based on their size, so, you know, it might need to be, pick a number, 5, 10 feet wider in diameter.
If it's improperly sized?
Well, that design won't work the way it's sketched. It's not a design. It's a sketch.
I think it also comes into play if there's additional turning lanes needed or something like that, if you have to take off another corner or sliver. Like if you have additional turning lanes coming on to Russell or Market or something like that, you know, I'm just... I see where the chairman's going. If, you know, if you wanted to have an intersection that maybe is not a roundabout, but you still had some sort of monument or something to bring people into the city in the middle of that intersection, similar to like a lot of old towns have, you know, you may need a little more space to make it work. That is all. And having the curves kind of lock you into just being able to work with that.
I understand what I think you're trying to say, but I don't think it's the purview of this board to get that involved in the design. This has had numerous revisions and considerations attack. The city has weighed in. I would not be in support of this amendment.
Okay. It's, from what I've seen, it hasn't actually been designed. And I know that there have been two options considered in the study, a stop sign or a roundabout. And given those two options, the roundabout works better from a traffic perspective. One thing that wasn't considered, and I don't know that it would be considered, is making the Russell-Market Street alignment the primary alignment. That would bring visitors in past this site, going more to the Foundry Garage, instead of having to turn left onto Market to come into downtown, which doesn't have as much parking as it did 15, 20 years ago. That's an option. I don't know if it would work. Putting in signals, much simpler, much less geometric change. Whether it needs turning lanes, as Corey mentioned, I don't know. But it's not, it's not, I'm not proposing to lock in anything. I'm proposing to provide more flexibility. That's the idea behind what I'm saying. That's all. And, but I don't want to, I talked about it. Nobody's adopted it. So unless somebody adopts it, it's a dead issue, so...
We have a motion as written. Did we have a second?
We did.
We did. And then I said this could be a modification. I don't think I can actually make the modification, yes.
I wouldn't be in favor of that because I feel like DPW spends a lot of time on tack looking at this, and they know the, you know, what's going on with that intersection. They know what they might need or the amount of land that they might need, and I feel like they've planned for that. And I trust that our engineers in the city have thought about that and looked into that and decided this is what they need in order for any of the possibilities hopefully down the road. So, I mean, nobody's perfect, but I think that they've looked at it enough that that was what they decided. That's their recommendation to us.
Mr. Chair, could we call the question?
Well, it isn't even a question yet. Somebody has to propose. We have a motion in a second.
This is just to adopt the findings of fact.
Correct, for the subdivision.
Correct.
Lot line, yes, as presented.
In 2.9, as read, okay. We have a motion in a second for the findings of fact. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd make a motion that we vote to grant subdivision approval with the included stipulations 2.1 through 2.3 as in the memo. Second.
Discussion? People getting tired?
I just think we've talked about it enough.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. Motion carries. Now we have, do we want to move on to site plan? Do we want to kick it to parking, traffic, and if we could continue it, have it come back?
I'm happy to do it with a stipulation. I mean, I think parking, traffic, and safety, we'll take a look at it, and we can certainly, as a stipulation, say that we are concerned about proper loading and unloading zones for the amount of use and use their expertise to figure out what's the appropriate timing and sizing of the loading zones.
I would request that stipulation be a little bit more robust by a plan, an actual drawing sheet be developed specifically studying deliveries to the building and how they would occur.
And presented to parking, traffic, and safety.
Correct. To and from the building, correct.
We can do that when we get to that.
Right.
We haven't quite got there yet, but if we're ready, I'll continue and make a motion that we vote to find that site plan application meets the requirements set forth in the site plan regulations, Section 2.9, evaluation criteria, and adopt the findings of facts as we're amending, as amended, which will be with the stipulation to PTS, which will come up in the next section. I mean, the actual stipulation will come up in the next, the amendment.
And is there a second? There was a second. Any discussion?
I have a discussion on that. Does this mean, I don't think that the community space met the criteria in our zoning ordinance. So I don't think, I just don't think it met those 13 examples, so that's my...
That would be a reason to vote against it.
Yep.
And that would also be related to the maximum building footprint, too, conditional use.
I couldn't hear what...
Oh, it'd be related to the conditional use, maximum building footprint vote that we have to take as well, I would imagine.
Yes. So a motion in a second. We have evaluation criteria. Did those include? I'm going to get that list in front of me.
We're just on the findings of fact for site plan.
I'm just wondering what those findings included. I don't remember.
Just site plan.
It was just site plan, yeah.
Just site plan regs.
Yeah.
Yep. Just site plan regs.
Any discussion on that?
I was just, again, curious. Can we legally approve the community spaces if some of the community spaces did not qualify under these 13 definitions?
It's our job to make a determination whether they do or do not. And we have a recommendation from the staff saying that they think they do, correct?
That's correct.
And we have to either concur or disagree with that determination. If you have a basis to disagree beyond saying you just don't agree, say so.
Well, I read the same memo from staff as you did, and I asked for a specific which one of the 13 it met, and I wasn't provided one.
For the rear accessway, is it pedestrian alley?
Didn't meet the definition.
Really not a place for debate. He can support or not support.
Yeah, it's, okay, you don't, the response, 17 points responded. Did you, I assume you saw that?
Right.
Okay, and you don't agree with that?
I frankly didn't have enough time to review that carefully. I'm more concerned about my second question provided to staff last night, wherein I, there's 13 examples of community space, and I don't find, besides the muse in the park near the traffic circle, I don't find where any other community space meets one of these definitions.
Right. I mean, we feel comfortable that the main use of that is a pedestrian alley. We've had several other projects around the city that have similar pedestrian alleys that are also used for emergency access.
Well, let's, can I read the definition of pedestrian alley?
Sure.
A paved brick pedestrian connector between buildings. Pedestrian alleys provide shortcuts through long blocks and connect community spaces and parking areas with streets. Pedestrian alleys may be covered by a roof and/or lined by shop fronts. The minimum width shall be 15 feet. minimum width shall be 15 feet. I'm sorry, but I don't think the, the fire lane driveway between the tracks in the building meets this definition.
I get your point. I mean, it is, they have detailed it in a way that enhances it, yet it is constrained by having a railroad on one side of it. So I think that's a factor that's unusual in the downtown. Um, yes, Pat?
I, I would argue that it actually is more of a pedestrian way because it's only a fire access road, and it's also the way that people, even possibly some of the office space might be using some of the parking. And the parking entrances are on that side, so they're going to be leaving that parking and walking up and down this alleyway, and wish to be able to enter either whether or not they're going towards Market Street or they're going towards Maplewood Ave, because they're not going to be able to go straight across. So this becomes much more of a pathway and a walkway once this place is built. I agree, right now, you can't see it because right now it's not, it's not there, it's not built, but I see it as being probably used more by pedestrians than it will be used by cars. But that's just my opinion.
If, if I'm a pedestrian, I have a choice to walk up Deer Street, I'm not going to walk on the tracks. I'm going to walk in front of the shop fronts and the stores. I don't want to go to some vacant area along the railroad tracks where the dumpsters are and all the stuff that goes on in the back of buildings. No, I, I'm going to stay where it's, where people are around and where I can look window shop.
Nice mural back there. Andrew?
Yeah, while I agree with Mr. Hewitt on the pedestrian versus thruway, I think I'm struggling, as it pertains to his point, there's really no alternative for these two access points. And obviously, they've gone to TAC and DOT to analyze that much further than beyond what we are capable of, in my opinion.
But those alternatives create different community space.
And I would agree with you there. And so that's my conflict of, they have these laid out for the purposes of DOT and park, or circulation, but I agree with you in the sense that it would be dominated, I think, by traffic count more so than, or it would be dominated by vehicular traffic count more so than pedestrian traffic count. And so at that point, in that balance, it then becomes more of a vehicle than pedestrian-friendly area. So I, I have the same conflict as you, Mr. Hewitt, but I'm just not sure how that rules in a, in a voting sense.
Bringing us back, we have a motion. What is our pending motion?
Just to adopt the findings of fact.
Yep, as amended.
As...
Joe seconded, I believe.
Yes, I did hear Joe seconded. I'm seeing fading, fading brains here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Repose.
No.
What is that?
What is the voting?
Maybe we should do a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
No.
Six to three.
Six to two.
Six to three.
There are three noes.
Three noes.
Three noes, all right, right, three noes.
Six yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay. Um...
Not a drama.
Next, we'll move on to vote to grant site plan approval with following conditions. We have the conditions subsequent, which will add to that, um, if I get a second, I'll add to that, I think.
Second.
All right, and then we're gonna add to the conditions subsequent to go to parking, traffic, and safety, and that there be a plan for loading and offloading and deliveries to and from the building that they are able to look at and advise for appropriate means for, for loading and unloading, and then, yeah, I think that's the only thing we're adding, right? Did I forget something?
If you want them to approve it, right, not just advise, you want the...
Correct. They can approve what they feel is appropriate based off of their expertise.
Yes, Corey?
Oh, sorry. Can we just change 2.5 and get rid of the roundabout, put in intersection?
No, I, I had done that, but people didn't like that.
Well, we could just put an easement for construction, for the construction of an intersection.
Intersection improvements.
Intersection improvements.
So, it sounds like we've got the motioner and the seconder agreeing with those amendments. Any other?
Any discussion?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to reiterate that there's a lot of good things about this project. Don't get me wrong. I, I really think it's a great improvement. It's gonna be, I think, a great addition for the city, but when I look at the intent of what this ordinance wanted to do with creating meaningful community space in our city, I just, it's really disappointing that we're setting a really bad precedent. If every driveway and back alley fire lane is going to be community space. I mean, I, I, that's all I mean. And I look at what the city's getting, compare, we talked about how much financially the developer's going to gain, and what do we get? So, that's all I'll say.
Well, all I'll say about that is, as we talk about possible zoning amendments, remember this, your concern, and let's talk about it then. That's, that's the place to talk about this and really test what we've got in the existing regulation. Anything else? Are we satisfied with the amendments to the conditions?
No, site plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, um, we'll move on to shared parking. Yes, vote to find, uh, make a motion to vote to find conditional use permit application meets criteria set forth in section 10.1112.62 and adopt the findings of facts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I hate to lose any public parking. I don't know that they can do anything, that developer can do anything to replace it either, and you can't stick three public parking, three or four public parking spaces in a gated area, so.
There's nothing you can do.
Nothing you can do.
They need it.
Unless you ask for more parking there, and I don't know.
If we take away the streetscape improvements and the bulbouts and make it less of a beautiful street, you could add more parking, but I don't know that that's a good trade, you know, that's the...
No, you're right.
Anything else? Are we ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will continue and make a motion that we vote to find that the number of off-street parking spaces provided will be adequate and appropriate for the proposed use of the property and to grant the conditional use permit as presented with the included stipulation regarding the shared parking arrangement shall be a secured, secured by a covenant acceptable to the city and recorded at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, we're all good.
All right, we're almost there. Make a motion that we vote to find the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in section 10.5A43 dot 43 and adopt, and to adopt the findings of fact as presented, and this is under the maximum building footprint.
Second?
Second.
Sorry. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will continue and make a motion that we vote to grant the conditional use permit to allow a building footprint up to 4,000 square feet within the CD5 as permitted under 10.5A43 spot, 43.
Forty thousand, right?
Yeah, forty.
Forty thousand, what did I say?
Four.
Sorry, you know, I'm a little tired.
Just wanted to help.
You know, my glasses are on and everything. I have no excuse, I'm just tired.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I, I will just quickly say, since I'm probably the only person here who actually saw the last project that was here, breaking up the buildings and making the pedestrian passes through, um, yeah, I think that it's going, yeah, I, I have no issue with the, the size of the footprint of these buildings, and I do think that that backside will be more of a pedestrian because you have people walking through the pedestrian areas as well. So there'll be circulation around the building, so.
You can do, do a loop.
You can do a loop. I see people with their dogs doing the loop in that, in that whole area.
If you look at the plan closely, it's really, I don't want to call it a street, but it's a one-way path. At the north end, there's a sign that says, "Don't go in there." It's one-way. So, anything that comes in from the west only goes one way.
Right.
So, it's gonna deter vehicles.
Yeah. My conflict was more so about if it's a car and a pedestrian, the pedestrian has to yield to the car that is traveling into the entrance to the parking garage. Therefore, it is now a driveway, not a community space. That's my conflict, and that's where I hesitate to see that true intent of the ordinance, and, and although I do believe they can coexist, they can't coexist at the same time. They, there, there is a yield there, and so that's my mental hurdle.
It's 20 feet. I think there's more than enough room for people. Just saying.
But for safety and just overall comfort levels, I don't like walking on streets where people are always just passing by me, therefore they're sidewalks, and maybe there's a dimension or some illustration change in tone, much like he said on Chestnut Street, like, hopefully that helps, but to me, whether 20 feet or, you know, 10, it's really just amount of comfort for, for pedestrians to spend more time there, so.
It's not a pedestrian stopping area, it's a pedestrian walking through area or jogging through area. But in any case, we have a motion.
Yes.
And a second for a not 4,000, 40,000 square foot building. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I'm done. That was the last one.
Okay, it's, it's almost 10 o'clock. As I said at the beginning, I am not in the least bit concerned that you disagreed with me, but I'm very concerned that people seem very tired. I know we need, at least need a break, but how much longer we can continue? Should we continue this, the balance?
Yes.
I think there's a lot left.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have a...
I'll pick it up.
Yeah, I want people to wake up, because you're, you're falling asleep.
There's still more coffee in here. I'll drink the rest. I'll down it.
Ready to go.
I have no coffee.
Yeah, I'm gonna, let's have a...
Five minute?
Let's have a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and get her done.
Hate it, you guys. Here to you guys. Mr. Chairman.
Wasn't he a crunchy barbon? No good.
I have, I have.
These are good.
Like to reconsider the concept of continuing to January for the rest of this, because I just think we're gonna be here till midnight.
Is that a motion?
Yes, please.
Second.
Second.
We only need one second.
Third.
We have a motion to continue the balance of the agenda till January?
I would, I would just say, you never know what's gonna show up in January.
I was gonna ask that too.
And so, it, it can create quite a snowball effect if you start.
Doing that many.
Although, we don't usually have as much as we've already done tonight, but I, I agree.
Yeah, but we've been here since six. And you were here longer before, right?
I was, but, you know. That's why I get paid more. Perhaps we can increase our efficiency and stay.
I, I think we would be much more efficient on the back four.
What do we have left?
We have Deer Street, Daniel Street, Shafe Street, McGee Drive, and Greenland Road.
Holy.
Now, with, with respect to my motion, I think Deer Street's gonna take an hour.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. I'm the second.
Turn on the candle at both ends.
Really tough, a really tough vote.
Holiday season.
All those in favor of continuing the rest of the agenda till January, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
I didn't vote. I think that was a three-three.
It was four and three.
I also did not vote.
Oh.
I don't have a preference one way or another.
Well, you're supposed to vote.
I don't know, I just like.
We're wasting time.
They're all here. They're all here.
Do you wanna do roll call?
Yeah, do a quick roll call.
Yep. Jim?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Joe?
No.
Corey?
No, what are we voting? Yeah, we're voting no. Yeah, I was no.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Done, we're, we're, we're going. Paddle to the metal. So, do we, uh?
It's all right.
Do we try to do Mr. ADU?
Yeah, please.
Let's, let's see if we can get Mr.-
He's, he's on.
This would be six H.
Sorry, we'll, we'll get to you.
What are we doing?
I believe it's four H. All right. Six fifty three Greenland.
Four H. I think that's, that is the one. So, we have application by Jaws, LJ Jaws, Brindamore Revocable Trust, and SE Brindamore Revocable Trust as Honors, and Luke J. Brindamore as applicant for property at 653 Greenland Road, requesting conditional use permit to create a detached accessory dwelling unit in an existing garage. I understand we have the applicant here by Zoom. Are you there? Is your microphone on mute? There he is.
I'm here, sorry. I, the Zoom thing made me do a couple extra things that I was unfamiliar with. Apologies. I appreciate the group stamina.
And your application is? Thank you.
Uh, my applicant, my application is for detached ADU for the existing structure, um, the garage that's on the property.
Can you describe it a little bit further?
Uh, the, the garage structure is facing the front street on 42 Harvard. We have, or on Harvard, we have two front streets technically. I think there's the Greenland Road sign and the Harvard Street sign. Um, this garage and recreational space were built in 2009 by the previous owner. Um, and my, the narrative I wrote, essentially, the, the one-liner is my, my parents are splitting their time in Connecticut and Florida, and their desire is to now split their time between Florida and with, uh, my wife and I as we start our family. Um, and my hope is eventually, they would be able to occupy that space to help, uh, to be with us.
Any questions of the applicant? Seeing no questions, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak two for against this application in person or on Zoom? Closed public hearing, board's pleasure.
I make a motion, oh, you got it?
I found it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we vote to find that the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in section 10.814.60 and adopt the findings of fact as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, you know, it's an existing rec area with a small kitchen in it, but no bedroom, and I think it's a great reuse of the space and meets the intent of the ordinance.
He's got the, he's, he's on a corner lot, so he's got a little double frontage issue, but-
This is also one where we saw an ADU come in front of us right at the, right next door last month.
Right, yes. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just-
Yeah, just, yeah, that's a good point, though.
Motion second to adopt the findings of fact. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we vote to grant the conditional use permit with the following modification. Oh, I'm sorry, that is not the one, we all, we're all set. No. I'm sorry, we-
That's right.
Yeah, okay. I, I thought I was getting on to the amended stuff. I'm sorry. Make a motion, we vote to grant the conditional use permit with the following modification and conditions as shown in the staff memo, including condition 2.1 as in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I believe we are on to Deer Street, if I lost track?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. We have a request of Tom Ballen and eight KPH LLC as owner and applicant for property located at 161 Deer Street, requesting site plan review approval for the construction of a four-story building to include a penthouse, commercial space, nineteen dwelling units, and associated set improvements. This property is shown on a Sessage map, 125 Lot 17-3, and lies in Character District 5, Downtown Overlay North End incentive and historic districts, LU 22-173. Who is here to present for this applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Shagnon from Ambid Engineering, Haley Ward. Also here tonight is Tom Ballen, applicant, Carla Goodnight from CG Architects, and Terrence Parker from Terra Firma Landscape Architects, the development team. Thank you for continuing to take this up, map 125 17-3. Project is to be known as 70 Maplewood Avenue. There'll be a new four-story building. This is the lot five from the 2016 DSA subdivision. This particular building was granted approval by the HTC on October 5th of this year. Uh, the plan set consists of a cover sheet, the historic subdivision plan. Uh, there is an easement plan, which I'd like to just point out. There are some existing transformers on the northeast corner of the property. Those transformers are going to be expanded and added to, so there's a slight expansion of that easement. There's a drain that crosses the property currently, and that drain is in an easement to the city. The easement is gonna be expanded, because at one point in time, additional land was purchased without creating an easement, but the drain was already there, so that will be done. And then, this plan in your set shows access, an existing access easement on the lot, uh, to the left, so it provides access to this proposed building, because the entrance to the garage level is on the left or west side of it. The existing conditions plan shows some of the site features. There's a forty-eight inch drain pipe which crosses the property. That's a predominant feature. It drains, if you go to the next slide, please, it drains a significant portion of the surrounding area up Bridge Street, and that crosses the lot, not this lot, but the lot to the left, the adjacent lot. There's a demo plan. Basically, all the site features are gonna be removed for the construction that's going on here. The site plan shows the creation of some twelve-foot wide sidewalks in the front and a pocket park in the back, and the site will dedicate twenty-two percent of the lot area to community space, which allows some building height increases. There's a slight increase in impervious surface that we're dealing with in the drainage that will come. The next sheet is rendering, showing the view of the building from the street. Then we have some floor plans. There's commercial first floor with nineteen residential units above. We show elevations. The elevation view shows that top penthouse level is really set back and softened from view to bring the height down. There's the next plans of the landscape plans. First plan shows the planting of street trees along Deer Street and Maplewood Avenue. There's a pocket park in the back with sufficient benching and landscaping to provide for respite, and that is open to the public. Additionally, the public will be able to circle the building. There's some bike racks in the upper right corner. Also, you see, the gray boxes are the transformers that are there and will be expanded. The next plans show landscape details. We'll go through those and then get to the parking level plan. As I mentioned, you enter the building on the left side, and there's a ramp down to the lower parking level. There's twenty-nine parking spaces. The ordinance requirement for this property is twenty-nine spaces, so it's providing the ordinance requirement parking. And since the units are roughly between twenty-two and twenty-eight hundred square feet, twenty-four hundred being the average, there'll be two spaces per each unit, which is appropriate for this downtown environment. Utilities, there's new electrical connections. Part of the plan shows the extension of conduit to make a loop that will go over to and connect to the foundry place. Electrical improvements. Grading plan shows the site grading, and then, as mentioned before, there's a slight increase in impervious area, and that is being mitigated by our tank detention system, which is on the north side of the building. Then we have the site details. Supplemental information in your package are all the approvals. The project has TAC. Crease and Greenery and HTC approval. There's a green building statement, confirmation that the address is going to be appropriate, code reviews, the complete drainage analysis. There was a traffic memo created for this site that looked at the trip generation. Previously, the traffic had been looked at on the entirety of that subdivision, and this change in use, there was a development that was part of that study that had more units, and this change of use lowers the traffic by forty percent. So, that was passed on to you through the technical advisory committee process without need for any other traffic mitigation. Uh, there is a cut sheet of an exterior light that will be placed as you, at the garage, so it would mitigate any concerns about that sidewalk along the west side of the building, and the entrance to the parking garage is an average grade plane sheet that shows the calculations that allow for the height as shown on the plans. And I included the adjacent site plan that was approved by the board, probably four or five years ago, that show the future circulation as the Deer Street Foundry Place Lot Three goes to construction. That's the presentation, made it quick. If you've got any questions, be allowed to answer them. Hopefully, we can get your approval here tonight.
Joe? Good evening. Could I have you go to sheet C3 for a second? And zoom in on, "Thank you very much for accommodating deliveries on-site." Now, on that, you're, you're, yeah, right there on the upper left with the drawing. Is it, is it possible, is it fairly painless to increase the length of that delivery spot all the way to the property line, just to accommodate a little bit bigger vehicle? It's, I don't know if you're, if, does that-
Yeah, that, that would be something you could do.
Because it, it's, um, you know, if a larger truck happens to come make a delivery, that, if you just push it all the way back to-
The width-
I'm thrilled that you're able to at least, you know, give this spot specifically for loading deliveries only. That's, that's, that's great.
Yeah, and this, this is a sixteen-foot wide passageway, so if the truck was out here, it would still provide, you know, eight feet of travel to go by, so. But we can certainly square up that pavement and go to the property line. Little bit of a grade change there, so we might have to cut back just a tad, but we can do that.
How wide is that strip on the side of the building, John, the, going up and down?
So, it's sixteen feet from the building to the edge of the parking spaces, or you're talking about the sidewalk strip?
The sidewalk strip just below the loading area going down to Deer Street.
It's four feet.
I'm sorry, you had your hand up and I didn't see it until I looked that way. Go ahead.
Um, when I, when the previous plans were all approved for this, one of my big concerns was the circulation and, and what's gonna happen with the building next door, and I know the owner owns both buildings. So, are there any plans to redevelop the bank buil- I'm calling the bank building for, because it is a bank, right? Uh, the bank building, or is it going to stay the way there is? Because I know that the approvals for that hotel really require the access through there, and I just wanted to make sure that was all still gonna happen that way.
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about?
So, the short answer is that the bank building will stay for a period of time unless they voluntarily decide to move. At some point, yes, that lot will be redeveloped, but because the access to the hotel will be through there, there'll be a certain amount of space that's gonna be dedicated to that driveway, and any site plan would have to come to the board for that Lot Three development down the road.
Okay.
It's, uh-
Yeah, thanks.
I think the hotel access comes out, and it was meant to be one-way circulation with two lanes. It could be revisited in the future, and maybe it could be an in-and-out on the left side of Lot Three.
I mean, when they come out of the garage, are they going to go around the bank, or are they gonna turn right and come back out?
They will, they will go around the bank.
Around the bank.
Yeah, it'd be a one-way circulation.
Uh, Jim and then Corey.
Yes, Mr. Shagnon, I'm sure you and Mr. Ballen are aware, there's two locomotives that idle in the northeast corner of the parking garage quite often, and I just, are there provisions for sound- And I just, are there provisions for soundproofing on this so your future tenants won't be calling City Hall all the time?
Yeah, in the green building statement, it talks about the extra sound deadening construction techniques that will be undertaken.
Okay.
Yep.
I just don't want to be responsible for approving something that we know may be an issue, that's all. And the other question, I just want to confirm that you have 19 residences and 41 parking spaces, although only 29 are numbered. Is that accurate?
Uh, there's only 29 parking spaces.
But I'm looking at your sheet here, and it looks like you're double stacking those parking spaces behind.
The space in front of the spaces as you enter in on the left are for storage.
But they could be used for parking.
I think that they might be able to be, yes.
All right. So again, it's just nice to have a backup plan for parking because you don't want to get caught short, so it appears to me you have 41 spaces for 19 units, so just confirming that.
Cory. Uh, thank you. I know two lots down from this, that proposed development did have infiltration, and I know it's kind of come up in this, at this site. Can you, can you speak to that a little bit, just to why infiltration won't work on this particular site?
So I, two lots down had infiltration. I know that the design at one point had detention under-
Yeah, I thought Lot 3-
-the building, but I thought it was separated from groundwater by barriers. I'm not sure it was an infiltrative as much as it was a storage.
Yeah, you actually might be right. I'm trying to, I, I slightly recall infiltration. They definitely had a gallery underneath the building.
Yeah, I think it was for storage. But, um, so the developer has tried to work the heights and all as we, we did come to the board and talk about that at the concept stage, the groundwater table, and trying to balance the height versus staying out of the groundwater table so that the garage level does not have water intrusion. The beauty of the system that's eventually designed is that the roof runoff is what's being detained, and that's coming from a higher elevation. The, our tanks are above the water table in the back, so it provides that attenuation of peak flow. I don't know that there's a need to infiltrate, um-
Yeah, you-
-beyond what's going to infiltrate through the park-
Sure.
-in the back.
And, yeah, I, I could have been wrong on Lot, Lot 3. My mistake there. Moving on to the, the pedestrian four-foot-wide walkway on the back, do you have any lighting proposed along that at all? I didn't see anything in the elevation views, or I know it's going to be a flush walkway with the adjacent driveway. There's no curbing or bollards with lights or anything like that. I just want to see if, if there is lighting, and if not, if maybe we could try to figure out how to get some lighting possibly along there.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good point. The plan is to light that from the building, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Andrew.
More of just a point of clarification on A2 of the architectural drawings. You have on the first level plan, it says, "Commercial area 7516, then commercial area 4954, and then just commercial." Is the commercial area that's 4,954 square feet, as well as the bottom part that says "commercial," one space or two? I'm just trying to get an image of it in my head, is the reason.
I think the, of course, the spaces are somewhat speculative at this moment, but I believe that the 49 was, uh, at least the restaurant.
It's both combined.
All right, thank you.
You started to mention it, John. Were you able to go into the ground a little bit more, or is it just a different building design that makes it less of a wall at Deer Street?
Yeah, so the, um, if you go to that, yeah, you can see that first level plan, and the architect worked really hard to, um, keep it a little higher, so, and also put doors that are at grade as you go down the street. So originally, we were thinking of the first floor being at one level, but the street slopes down, and the first floor level is following the street grade, and then below, at the below level, it's shortened up so that you don't have that issue of, you know, you can have the full height over here, but the storefronts don't have a full basement below them. Is that, do you understand?
Yeah, no, it's a, to my way, I think it's a huge improvement.
Thank you.
Much better streetscape.
Yes, yeah, to follow the grade and have the doors at grade is definitely much better, yeah.
Yes, Joe.
Just very quickly, I'm realizing that my request earlier appears to be, I was looking at another drawing about extending that space. Does it complicate things? It looks like it's in an easement to the city for drainage. Does that complicate that request to extend that at all?
I don't think so, because the driveway's already over that same drainage pipe.
Thanks.
Yes, Cory.
The drainage pipe, that kind of brings up and kind of goes back to the stormwater here. Is there going to be any complications during a storm surge event when that pipe is? The pipe does have a check valve, from what I recall, I can't really, maybe it doesn't. I can't remember if that pipe has a check valve or not, but during a big storm event when you have a high tide, did you, did you account for that in your system to be able to retain that water until the tide goes down so that you can then discharge?
Yes, if you look at the detail sheet, the way that the art tank system is elevated, the art tank drain pipe will, uh, the, the, the bottom of the drain collection art tank system is above the top of the four-foot diameter pipe.
Yep.
So that if the pipe surcharges, that water will just sit there. Some of it will bleed in through pressure, but it's not going to back it up anymore than-
Okay, great.
Not going to back it up anymore than, were you about to say something?
It's not going to back it up into the building or into a space that would be harmed by the backup, is what I was going to say.
Okay.
Yep. And the, when the pipe surcharges, it bubbles out at a catch basin on, um, Bridge Street in front of 30 Maplewood. That's the lowest point, and the second lowest point is the catch basin in front of this building. The city has done a study, and part of the, um, future improvements possibly will be diverting drainage from that pipe to try to correct that situation. The other thing is possibly resizing that pipe from a 48 to a five-foot diameter pipe, and that was studied by the TAC committee and talked about as far as how that interplays with this site, and it does work in the future. So the city will be able to upsize that pipe without impacting the building.
Yep.
Other than the disruption to the traffic.
Yep, there's been a lot of talk about that pipe. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Going to open up the public hearing? Anybody here to speak too far against this application?
There we go.
I'm awake.
Remember, I've been up since 4:30.
Me too.
Good evening. Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McNamara Street. First, I would like to compliment this team. I go to a lot of meetings and have often found that what happens is the people at the meetings say, "This is what we'd like to see," and the people on the other side of the table say, "Yeah, yeah," and then the next meeting, very little or nothing was done. In this case, every meeting I went to, something was brought up, the next meeting, the change was made. So I'd like to compliment them on really listening to the different boards and listening to the community, which is usually me, unfortunately for them. But altogether, I think that they've been very cooperative, and they developed a very nice plan, even though it's a very big building. I'm not big on big buildings, but that's what's allowed, and they did a nice job with it. I do have a question, and that is, when you look at the height page, and I'm sorry, Peter, I didn't write down what number it is, but it's the page that shows the actual heights of the building. It has the numbers, there it is down there. So it's the top right one, I believe, but it shows that the top height to, to the top of the building, what I read was 55 feet 6 inches. Then the next height it shows you is to the top of the penthouse, which is 62 feet, which is allowed because they got the community space. And then there's the 3 foot for their things, which is also allowed. But when I do the math, and I could be wrong about this, there's, the penthouse is only going to be six feet 6 inches tall. And I thought that code requires, and I'm not a code expert, but I, I think code requires that most buildings have to be seven, and then you have a roof on top of that. So maybe I'm making a math, math mistake and I read it wrong, but that's my question. Other than that, I support this. I think they did a great job. I got on board with this one because of the parking, and they were right on that right away. So other than the math, I'm okay. Have a good night.
Carla's going to take this one.
Good evening. Carla, good night, CJ Architects. I'll be brief. There is a parapet wall around the perimeter as a guard so that you don't fall off. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak too far against this application? Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Want to close the public hearing? Board has work to do.
I guess I will make the motion to vote to find that the site plan application meets the requirements set forth in the site plan regulations, Section 2.9, evaluation criteria, and adapt the findings of facts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
Adopted?
I screwed up. I meant to do "as amended," and I, I checked the wrong one.
I thought you said "as amended."
I didn't, I said, "But I meant to do 'as amended,' so."
I think you did say that.
Okay, I did say that. Everyone heard me say "as amended," right?
It's recorded, so, I mean, someone's going to tell us.
As amended.
You said it.
It was "as amended," that was what I said. I'm sure-
The record reflects "as amended."
Yes.
Yes, "as amended."
Let's throw the replay flag.
Um, did we vote yet?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, so I can move on. All right, let's vote to grant site plan approval with the following conditions, and all of the conditions in here, the amendment and what I would like to add to it is that on the side of the building where the ramp to the parking is, that dark side, dark sky complaint, lights on the building to let that sidewalk be added.
Someone, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm seconding you.
Just need a second, yeah.
Second. Second.
We have multiple seconds. Did you like, would you like to, I thought you said they were putting lights on the building already.
Yeah, they're just not in the plan, so I figured by making it a stipulation, we make sure it gets done. That's, that's all. Um, I, I will speak to it if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Um, I am very pleased at the way this came out. I was a little concerned with the different heights in the sidewalk and along Deer Street, but I think it's really worked out, and I give the people credit. This is actually a really pretty building. I love the corner, the roundness, and the roundness that then is mimicked to where all of the balconies are, so I think it's a really pretty building, and so thank you. That's all I have to say.
Is, is this where we might add the extension of the delivery space as well, or is that-
Oh, yes, I forgot about that request, yes.
To maximize that for-
I will add an amendment that we want to maximize the width of the delivery space.
Length, the length, yeah.
The length, length, size.
Yeah.
I would just maximize the size as much as possible.
And whoever seconded it, I don't remember, I think there were a couple of seconds to agree with that.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll add that amendment as well.
Yes, Cory.
I just wanted to make the comment, well, um, this is, that alley is, well, that sidewalk, that four-foot wide, I do think is one of the things that does not meet the definition of the community space. However, when you add it all up, they still get the 20%. So it's fine, but I, this one, I definitely, because-
Four-foot sidewalk is not a sidewalk.
Well, and also, it doesn't even call, in the community spaces, you don't, the only option is wide pedestrian sidewalk, in which it calls out a minimum of 10 foot in here, so.
And they're, they're counting it as part of the pocket park?
The pathway to it.
The pathway to it, and not a wide sidewalk. The only thing we would want is that we preserve that for public access, so it's for circulation around the building. They're identifying it as part of the pocket park. You are right, if they remove that, they still meet the 20%.
Right.
So, you know, but it will guarantee that we'll have public access along that way.
Right, so it'll have public access for both corners.
Right.
And people walk in this, in the driveway anyway, they won't walk in there.
At the risk of adding 30 seconds to this, I'll just note that both access points are ADA compliant as well.
Yes.
Yeah, in a, in a good spirit of the season, I'd like to second Counselor Moreau's comments and Liz Bratter's about this building. I, I must say, it's, it's quite attractive, and it really, I think, is, it's going to look great, and they did a great job.
Cory.
And I just want to add that, you know, I, with the solar being added, along with the EV chargers thing.
It's a tremendous improvement from when you first came to this board. You are to be congratulated. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My iPad's getting tired.
I said an hour, like, 42 minutes.
Actually, that's actually-
I don't know. Just a second.
With the request of Seaport Realty LLC owner for property located at 85 Daniel Street, requesting site plan approval to add two-story addition and convert existing structure to a four-unit apartment building consisting of four apartments, associated stormwater utility and site improvements. The property is shown on Assessors Map 107 as Lot 8 and lies in the character District 4 and Historic Districts LU 22-75. Who is here to speak to this application?
Good evening. My name is Mark Janini from McHenry Architecture. I'm joined by Alex Ross from Ross Engineering and applicant and building owner, Lane Chaney. I'll try to keep you thorough enough while keeping this brief, considering the hour. The existing building on 85 Daniel Street currently was built in about the mid-1800s by the Methodist Church for Sunday School, is my understanding. It was later turned to a tenement building, and most recently, most people remember it as, I'm drawing a blank. Melios, thank you, which was from about the mid-'70s to the early 2000s. Currently, there are two retail spaces on the ground floor with apartments on the second and third floor of the building. Our proposed expansion on the project is a two-story addition on the rear, as well as dormers on the third floor to make the third floor spaces more usable, more friendly. Do you want me to continue through the site stuff? Um, at this point, I'll let Alex go over the site plans with you, and then I can answer any architectural questions.
So, uh, for the record, Alex Ross with Ross Engineering, we prepared the site plans. Really simple project, as Mark described. The addition is off the back, and actually, the, the end result is a decrease in impervious coverage, which is, I always kind of sought for. And we, we are able to provide six parking spaces. I don't know if everyone's familiar with this area, but back in this, in this lane out back, it is kind of tight. but back in this, in this lane out back, it is kind of tight. But that's how the buildings across the street are set up, and there's small parking in between garages and structures. And the way we've designed this new addition actually provides more than most have in that area. So there is room to get those parking spaces in and change a lot of asphalt surface into pervious pavers. We did work with TAC quite a bit to go through the different utilities, but everything is existing, and we're just making improvements to what's there. So that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, Beth.
So your garage, garages, are those actually tall enough to fit two cars? In each, really? The lifts?
They are.
They really, like, how big of a car? I'm guessing my SUV, probably not. But, I mean, just looking at them, they look kind of small. Like, do they have to be like a mini? Do you have to have a mini car in order to actually use those?
Two Miata's.
It's got a reinforced roof, and it crushes the car against it.
I'm just, I'm blown away, because that car looks way too big to go in that garage. Especially to have two. All right, you tell me it is. That's all, that's my only question.
My question would be, is the parking allotment predicated, or is the lift predicated on getting the parking allowance?
Yes, because that gives them four parking spaces.
Well, now a better question now that goes through my head.
Any questions, any of the applicant?
Just a comment. It's a beautiful, beautiful result.
Yeah.
Wonderful. It's an important building on Daniel Street. Looks great.
Excellent.
Clever reuse.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, no more questions. I'm going to open the public hearing. For all those people ready to speak two for against this application?
We also want to tend the...
Let Liz go.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find that the site plan application meets the requirements set forth in the Site Plan Regulations, Section 2.9, Evaluation Criteria, and Adopt the Findings of Fact as Presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic reuse of this building. But I did, I was wondering if the cars went into the basement. Yeah, this is a valid question.
You still wonder? You won't be stacking Range Rovers in there.
You're not getting an SUV in there.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We vote to grant site plan approval with the following conditions as outlined in the staff memo.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything new? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Moving right along.
I believe we have the request of Jonathan Watson Sobel Revocable Trust as owner for property at 49 Chief Street, requesting preliminary final subdivision approval. Subdivide one lot with an area of 5,402 square feet and 50 and 55/0ths feet of continuous street frontage on Chief Street, and 22 and 93/0ths feet of frontage on Custom House Court into two lots as follows. Lot 1 with an area of 1,855 square feet and 22 and 93/0ths feet of continuous street frontage on Custom House Court, and Propose Lot 2 with 3548 square feet and 50 and 55/0ths feet of continuous street frontage on Chief Street. This is on Assessors Map 107, Lot 21, and lies within the CD4 and Historic Districts LU 22-179. I'm guessing you're here to present this one, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Board, John Shagnon, Emmett Engineering, Haley Ward, presenting for, and on behalf of Jonathan Watson Sobel, who maybe, he's out of town, and he might be viewing, maybe not. But I'll be brief. 49 Chief Street. Mr. Sobel wants to, for estate planning purposes, create a new boundary line that would run along the 49 Chief Street building, out past the, out to the back in a straight line. That project received TAC approval on December 6th, subject to one condition. Because the existing water service for the building in the rear, 49 Chief Street rear, actually comes from the service to 49 Chief Street, because we are creating a separate lot, and there's a one-service-per-lot requirement. We need to redo the water service to access the building in the rear directly. That's the one condition. That condition was that, as presented, is that that water line be installed before the mile hour is recorded. Understand that totally. We'd like, beg your indulgence to maybe add a few words that the water line is either installed or bonded because the sale of the lot may assist in the, the funding of that water, new water line. And so that will not be able to be sold until the mile hour is recorded. So if it's possible to add that language, Mr. Sobel would be very appreciative. It is a tight alley. The construction is going to be, you know, expensive because it will be a lot of handwork to run in that four-foot space. Other than that, I'll answer any questions you have, and hopefully, we can see your way to an approval tonight.
Yes, Beth.
So to expand on your request a little bit more, you want to be able to record the subdivision plan as long as you have a bond for the work to be done? Is that what you're asking us?
Correct. So that, just like you do when you have a subdivision, that there has to be a road built. You record the plan, but you bond for the road construction. So it would be, get a price, get a, somebody lined up, but be allowed to record the plan with a bond in place, just as an option.
So he could sell one of the parcels.
Correct.
But it wouldn't have the correct water service. When he sells it, right?
Yeah, that's the conundrum.
Just legally thinking about that.
Yeah. I understand.
I was just going to ask, was this, was this requested of the previous board as well?
The TAC, the TAC advisory committee made that a stipulation.
But was the request, was the bond piece requested to them?
Oh, yeah, we did not bring it up at that time. You know, unfortunately.
So this, this additional request preserves their, their, yeah, okay. We're just adding to it.
Be subject to the legal department and all that normal stuff, right? Any, any other questions? This is public hearing, right?
Yes, sir.
Public hearing is open. Anybody here to speak two for against this application? No, there isn't. Anybody on Zoom? Public hearing is closed.
Yeah. I make a motion that we vote to find that subdivision application meets the standards and requirements set forth in subdivision rules and regulations to adopt the findings of fact as amended. Second.
Actually, the findings are as presented.
Oh, it's just that condition? All right, then as presented, I'll change that. I always think when I have to change something, I have to amend them.
It's the approval that needs a condition.
Because he presented the change, right?
I'm getting so confused.
He presented the request, is that what you're trying to...
The findings of fact have been adopted as presented. A condition of approval will be as he... You can tell we're all tired. So you were about to make that motion with your...
With the presented, yeah, as presented, yeah.
No, but you were about to make another motion.
Not till we vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we are getting tired.
Okay, vote to grant, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval with the following stipulations. 2.1, water service line shall be installed and functioning or bonded prior to the recordation of the subdivision plot. And 2.2, 2.3, and 2.4, as written in the memo. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much for...
You're good.
Thank you.
Stay, staying up late. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'm...
Patient gentleman here.
Yes. Request of Darren Kenny, his owner for property at 800 McGee Drive, requesting wetland conditional use permit under Section 10.1017. This project proposes to service 168 square feet within the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. This application proposes constructing a 10-by-12 shed on top of a two-inch crushed stone area that is 12-by-14 feet within the wetland buffer. Application's proposing an area that is farthest from the wetland edge, this is a long description, and has already done invasive species removal on site within the vegetated buffer strip. The property is shown on Assessors Map 219, Lot 456, and lies in the single-residence SRB District LU 22-208.
That's a lot.
Sir?
Not a lot to share. It's a 10-by-12 shed that...
Just your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Darren Kenny. 800 McGee Drive. I was trying to jump through everything to get it home.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a 10-by-12 shed on a crushed rock base that's currently a yard. Basically, part of our house and this would be within that wetland area. It's as far away from the pond as possible without being in the driveway.
Questions of the applicant? Yes, Cory.
Is, is the shed going to be, like, off the driveway, or...
It's, so the driveway it ends, there's a, there's like a crushed rock drainage area that goes at the end of the driveway that then flows into the pond.
Yep.
And then the shed would basically be at the end of that.
Okay.
But the way that the property line cuts over, it's diagonal, so it has to be shifted over a bit from the side.
Okay.
Did this go to Concom?
Yeah. It's in your memo.
Yeah, I just, it's getting there.
Still have to read.
Yeah. My only point was, like, don't keep gas in there, or oils, or contaminants. Good to...
Any other questions? I think this was also a public hearing.
Yes.
Going to open the public hearing really fast. Public hearing's open. Anybody speak two for against this application? No. Public hearing is closed. If you're concerned about fuel, that has to be a condition in the part of the approval, but I'm not, whatever you want to do.
I make a motion to find that the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in Section 10.1017-5, and to adopt the findings of facts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next.
Ben?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit, wetland conditional use permit with the following conditions. The Conservation Commission recommends that the property owner follow NOFA land care standards on this site. And 2.2, the Conservation Commission recommends that the property owner consider native plantings where bittersweet currently is being removed.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm not familiar with the NOFA, but it sort of kind of whips in.
Not covering bad, bad stuff in there.
Covers that.
It does.
Excellent.
Northeast Organic Farming Association recommendations.
Box checked.
So it's more, it doesn't really have to do with what goes in the shed. It's more the lot itself, like, using, you know, low phosphorus, slow-release nitrogen fertilizer, all that kind of stuff. But it doesn't really pertain to the shed.
So the nuclear waste in the shed is fine. Got it.
Essentially, yeah.
That's it.
Any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. You're approved. Thank you very much. Thank you for your perseverance.
Policing it.
Yes.
No, try to put it in there, there. That's private property. What are you getting in your shirt?
For a second.
I should have brought him...
Here, almost done, correct?
Yes.
Let's go.
What's next?
My iPad went from four to six. It must be getting really tired.
I have it printed right here if you want it.
I have it right here. I have it sitting right here to you.
Okay, I think we have this council referral on the ADU amendments from the Land Use Committee. We've talked about this a little bit, and I think we need to have a workshop discussion about this. And I believe staff is queued up and ready to do that. And then, of course, we have to have a public hearing. Not happening tonight. Do we want to try to pick a date in January?
Is this what we did the Google survey for, dates?
There were two workshop possibilities. One was something I'm not going to talk about tonight, which is the other zoning amendments and other things we need to work on. And then there was the idea for this. They could be the same night.
Okay, did we get enough input from the Google thing?
Beverly has the results of the poll.
Thank you. Saves us a bit of time talking about it.
Good evening. I did provide two dates. We did not identify a lot of dates in January. The city clerk has not released, she has now, but at the time, she had not released the calendar for January, so we just went with the second Thursday. So the two dates that were the most popular were the 22nd, but that is obviously next week, bumping up right against Christmas, and the 26th. There is this work session that I anticipated that the planning board would want to have. They've expressed the interest in having work sessions when amendments are before them, before. And then I believe that the planning board also had requested a work session of their own to discuss regulatory amendments. So there are two work sessions that are on the table. I have two dates, but we can mine for additional dates if you want to assign one of those dates, and then we can see if we can come up with some other January dates. We had a tough time, so.
Well, we have options then. Where we have, now we've got more possible dates in January. Do we want to have another Google poll to see? I don't think the option's next week. I'm not seeing it.
No.
So the option is either we pick January 26th, or we... There's plenty of time. There's plenty of time for notice, so it can be...
January 26th is good.
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 It's, it's January 26th for workshop? Everybody good with that?
Yep.
So the topic of the workshop will be ADUs? And then you'd like a second doodle poll to be sent out with some additional January dates? Is that correct?
I think we're going to need more. I think we won't get much more than ADUs in that workshop night, unless we have a night like tonight, and I don't think we want to do that.
Probably be at the 26th.
Second date.
So we will poll for a second date, and we will reserve the room for, I'm sorry, January 26th, the second Thursday of the month, for an ADU work session. We'll have our consultant attend that. And then we will poll for a second date in January for the other work session.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Beverly.
Thank you for hanging on, too, Beverly. That's...
Yes.
I think that is it, correct?
Motion adjourned?
Meeting is adjourned.